This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Tonight's meeting will be broadcast on Charter Channel 994, WRFP 101.9 FM, and online at ValleyMediaWorks.org. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please, to verify quorum?
Commissioner Beeka?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Clankhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Loganbill?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
And Commissioner Boo?
Here.
All right, we have a full board tonight. Our first item on the agenda is the public forum. So this is generally a 30-minute time period in which citizens may address the board to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda or non-agenda items. Each citizen is allowed up to four minutes to address the board, providing they have additional or new information that has not been previously shared at the meeting. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor any person connected with the school district in the public forum. And we do have 14 individuals signed up for the public forum tonight. So I first would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to extend time for everyone to speak in the public forum.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Always in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. So I'll just ask that when you come up, the microphone is already on, so you don't need to touch it, and state your name and address. And if possible, keep your comments succinct, because we do have a lot of individuals tonight. So first is Rebecca Denny. And just state your name and address. Thank you.
Rebecca Denny, 811 Taft Avenue, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Quisiera empezar dándoles las gracias a cada miembro de la Mesa Directiva de nuestro Distrito Escolar. Es un honor dirigirme a ustedes hoy, mostrando mi apoyo de un programa tan importante para nuestra comunidad. Hola. Me llamo Rebecca. Yo soy presidenta del Centro de Conexión, un grupo en Eau Claire sin fines de lucro que quiere representar la comunidad latina de Chippewa Valley. En los ocho años que llevo siendo voluntaria y directora de esa organización, he visto el poder de prestar atención a la población que habla español y no inglés. Hay muchas razones a favor del programa de doble inmersión aquí en la Chippewa Valley, pero principalmente, lo que yo veo aquí es una oportunidad para establecer una relación completamente nueva entre la comunidad hispanohablante y la que habla inglés. If you could understand most of what I just said, I applaud you. If you could not, here's an overview followed by an explanation. As president of the local nonprofit El Centro de Conexión, I've seen the power of paying attention to our minority populations, their needs, their cultures, their language. But most of all, for families in our community whose primary language is Spanish, there's power in showing them that we care enough about their kids in our school district to continue nurturing their home language, and furthermore, ensuring that their peers do as well. Few things put a bigger smile on my face than picturing my own kids when they enter school age, Diego and Anna, speaking without barriers to their peers at school, no matter their home language. Valeria is a new mom in Eau Claire who is home with the flu tonight, but wanted you to hear her words. Hello, my name is Valeria Ramírez López. I'm 20 years old, I'm from Mexico, and I'm a mother of a one-year-old boy. When Rebecca told me about this great idea, I was very happy. I love the idea of wanting our kids to have the opportunity to learn a second language, and not just learning another language. It's teaching our kids to be open. It's teaching our kids to be open to different people, cultures, and beliefs. I personally came a few years ago to Eau Claire without knowing any English, and that is very hard, because I was older. And the fact that kids will be taught another language will make it easier for them to learn instead of waiting to get to middle school. My son Mateo hears Spanish most of the time at home, but I would love him to know both languages very well, to be able to speak, read, talk, and understand both equally. I think it's awesome for kids who don't speak Spanish to be able to learn it, and for parents to be able to see kids exploring different things that are out of their comfort zone, and to understand that learning to speak a totally different language is not easy, and to have more respect to the ones who already know both. But being bilingual is very helpful. Teaching our kids two totally different languages will make them smarter. I support the idea of teaching the young future different cultures. I think it's amazing, and it stops kids from facing racism or bullying other kids for not speaking English well, because they will learn how hard it is to learn it. Thank you for doing that. With respect, Valeria Ramírez López. Valeria is a former student of the Eau Claire Area School District, and the first student I was assigned to help as a Spanish BEA at Memorial High School. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Michael Lee.
Good evening. My name's Michael Lee, and I am a lifelong resident of the Eau Claire area, not Eau Claire specific, but Eau Claire area. I have a four-year-old daughter and a son on the way, and I'm here today to support the dual immersion program for their sake. I'm supporting the program because there's tremendous opportunities that the district staff and others and community members here today have and will be talking to you about. These opportunities create enhanced brain development, expands our workforce opportunities and skill sets, and builds community. Some of the additional opportunities include the opportunity for kids to expand the 21st century skills that we all work towards, and expanded career opportunities that I know I have personally missed out on had I been bilingual. As the previous speaker just indicated, these types of programs create and expand communities, which is extremely vital in today's society and world. And it also welcomes, shows that we welcome speakers whose native language is not English. Maybe it's their second, third, or fourth language. As I said, I didn't have these opportunities growing up here in the Chippewa Valley. And although I've had numerous Spanish classes in high school and in college, I've traveled extensively and missed out on those opportunities to utilize the language, because I couldn't pick it up fast enough. I couldn't pick it up quick enough as an adult learner of a language versus the capabilities that a five-year-old, six-year-old has. So I want my children and those in the audience and throughout the community to have the opportunity like other communities, children in other communities have, to pick up at least a second language, if not a third, and take advantage of those opportunities I talked about earlier. Finally, I just want to thank the district staff for their dedication to this program. They've worked hard, and they did their work to show the benefits and some of the challenges that come with this. But I think the benefits outweigh the challenges and creates tremendous opportunity for the younger generation, which is needed.
Thank you. Next is Matt and Harrison Hicks.
Hi, I'm Matt Hicks. Permanent resident here in Eau Claire. I live at 1318 Omaha Street and have lived there for 15 years, where both my children have attended Longfellow. This one still does. That was a thumbs up for everybody. But we're here for the dual immersion. I find it extremely beneficial to be able to speak two languages in the workforce, especially nowadays. It's amazing, at my job, there's 80 of us or so, and only two of us who speak Spanish. And with that, everybody else has to use the language line. The company, the state, pays for that. If we were, they pay me just normal, as I'm translating. I also believe that it would definitely bring communities together, communication and dialogue between different ethnicities. And that's basically it for me. He did want to say something. You still do?
Yes. So I think it would be really cool if we were able to learn Spanish in kindergarten, because it's really easy to learn another language when you're young. Like, if you're taught, let's say, Spanish in this case, when you were three years old, instead of when you were taught it in, like, middle school or high school, it would be much easier to pick up and learn when you were three years old, instead of being in the middle of middle school or high school. And also, if you were in kindergarten, then those kindergarteners would go to first grade, now the first graders would learn Spanish, then the other kindergarteners, and then go into the five years, and then we have this entire school that could be able to speak not only English, but also Spanish.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming. And thank you, Harrison. Great job. Okay, next is Chauncey Harris.
Chauncey Harris, 1436 Taft Avenue. So I live right by Mans, but I'm here to support Roosevelt as a neighborhood school. I retired last year after 27 years with Nestle, and one of the joys of my working at Nestle was becoming involved in the Adopt a School program. The Nestle facility adopted Roosevelt Elementary, I believe, a little over 20 years ago. And as part of the Adopt a School program, Nestle has provided funding and donations for a variety of activities. I feel, most importantly, volunteers to help with many activities. With the close proximity to Nestle, it's easy for employees to, in the middle of the day, if their work allows it, to pop over and spend 30 or 60 minutes at the school. It's truly been a win-win for both Roosevelt and for the Nestle employees. I have found, and many other employees have expressed, that visits to Roosevelt are energizing, the children brighten their day, and are always excited to welcome us. The staff is exemplary. And when employees return to work, they often have a fresh perspective and are often more productive for the rest of their day. Some of the programs that we've been able to participate and help with are after-school tutoring and after-school math club, Riff Days, reading is fundamental book distribution, Featured Classrooms, Junior Achievement. I know Mr. Loganbill has done some of that there at Roosevelt. Walk the School Day, Milk Cap Challenge, judging contests, helping with author visits, and other things. The Roosevelt community is great to interact with, to support, and to learn from. I was blessed to get in at the start and have thoroughly enjoyed being involved. I've been reading with one teacher's fourth-grade class for 19 years, even though I've retired him. I still go over there, sometimes a couple times a week. It's just really neat. So Nestle, as a company, promotes being involved in the communities where they have facilities. They call it creating shared value. It's very easy to do this and be involved with the proximity of Roosevelt next door, and I hope it continues to be the case. I'm concerned that if not, it may be more difficult for the facility to connect with a school that's further away. So I just wanted to say I've really enjoyed working with the staff and with the students. It's been one of the joys of my life. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all of your volunteerism over the years. Thank you. Next is Rachel Hart Brinson.
Hello, my name is Rachel Hart Brinson. I live at 4318 Meadow Lane in Eau Claire. Buenas tardes. I am here to speak in favor of the dual immersion program. My oldest child is seven and a first grader at Meadowview Elementary. Last year, her top-of-the-list thing that she wanted to do for her summer program was to take Spanish classes through the priory. I signed up at 8:00, and there were 350 applications ahead of her. So Spanish is a really popular class. I'm not sure if it's just because you can also, it's basically free childcare all day. I think that's part of it. But it is something that is very popular. My youngest child will be entering kindergarten in the fall, so this is timely for me. I have been in support of the bilingual immersion program since I heard about the possibility last year. I speak Spanish, and once thought that I would raise bilingual kids, and I had to let that dream go for a variety of reasons. So I am thrilled at the idea that I might be able to realize that dream with at least my second child. My husband was tepid on the idea at first, but after attending the listening sessions, he was just as excited as I was, possibly more. And I think this is because he is a college professor, and the research indicating an almost years-above-grade-level performance in testing is pretty convincing. I'm sure you'll hear about that if you haven't already. I feel a little selfish coming in here and saying, "I want my kid to have this program, because it has such awesome academic benefits." But I don't just want this for my kids. I also want these benefits for kids. Whose first language is Spanish? Well, I know schools do what they can, and many Spanish-speaking children succeed academically. I have seen firsthand how hard it is for kids who come into our schools speaking little or no English. I volunteered last year to work with a second grader, who had just arrived, speaking only Spanish. And I'm sorry, I've also been a Peace Corps volunteer, and it's just really hard to know all of the things that these families go through to get here. He has an older brother and two younger sisters, one of whom is in my daughter's grade. Kids like this would benefit so much from education in both Spanish and English. And I hope someone who knows a bit more about this issue will speak to it, but I've heard of research on language learning and academic achievement correlated with academic training in your first language. I've also heard a lot about equity as a focus in the decisions the board is making. I cannot imagine a program that speaks more to equity than this one. It's not just academics that are benefits in learning another language. Research shows that speaking another language makes you more empathetic and able to see another's point of view. This makes you a better team player, a more understanding partner, a better able to negotiate, and a more effective communicator. Google Skills Employers Want, and you'll find the top three categories listed as critical thinking, communication, and teamwork, all skills that you enhance by speaking another language. So while they aren't specifically academic skills, the things you inherently learn while being in a bilingual classroom are setting you up for post-secondary success. Post-secondary success is the vision of the Eau Claire School District. So I believe that to prepare all of our students for the future, we need programs like the dual immersion program.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please vote to approve this amendment.
Thanks. I think we got that message. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Megan Lee Cohen.
Okay, before I say anything else, thank you, members of the school board, for letting me be here, for letting me tell you why this program is so important to me and for our community as well. My name is Megan Lee Cohen. I moved to Eau Claire just about 10 years ago to start teaching Spanish at the university. That's what I've been doing ever since. Outside of that, I have a two-year-old daughter named Luna, who I hope will behave well for this. My husband and I have another child on the way. And so this is something that will be awesome for our family, but I'm going to talk to you not just as a mother and on behalf of my family, but as a community member here in Eau Claire, as an English speaker, as a Spanish speaker, as well as educational professional in the field of languages. So a dual immersion program is something that I strongly support, and for many reasons. In terms of personal experience, I speak English, obviously. In addition, Spanish and German, and that has been a wonderful gift for me. It opens up so many doors. It allows me to communicate with so many more people than I otherwise would. It allows for rich experiences for me and for my family members, so I can interpret and translate for, for me and all of us to get exposed to diverse points of view. So it's been a wonderful gift for me. But for my children, Spanish speaking is going to mean more than that. For my children, their grandparents' parents don't speak much English. And so for them, it's going to be a way to communicate with their grandparents on a deeper level, to have a richer relationship with them, to visit the community where their grandparents come from, and communicate when they're there, and really to connect with part of who they are and where they came from. My husband and I are both Spanish speakers, and we try to speak to our daughters as much as we can in Spanish at home. And it's been harder than I expected, for a lot of reasons. We want to do it, and we keep trying, because we think there's so many benefits coming from it. We think it's wonderful for kids to learn languages at a young age. It opens a lot of doors for them. We have personal reasons, like their relationship with their grandparents. But it's been a struggle, because we're raising our child in a community where, and in a country where English is obviously the dominant language. So her school is in English, her peers are talking to her in English, her TV programs are in English. And we saw a big difference with our daughter when she started a new preschool. Before, she had been in a daycare with one other Spanish-speaking or bilingual child, and they would talk to each other in both languages. And she entered her new preschool at two with similar abilities in both languages, stronger in English, but mainly two-word phrases like mas agua or Luna play. And then within a couple of months, she was speaking in full sentences in English. So things like, "I want to watch Paw Patrol," in her Spanish, which is awesome. And her Spanish, however, she lost some of her Spanish vocab and has since then. So now, her Spanish is mixed maybe with English, like things like, "Mom, I want agua." And she's lost some of that. And so she still understands both languages, but for example, her conversations with her grandparents are now, they speak in English, or sorry, they speak in Spanish, and she answers in English. So we like to see her speaking Spanish and reading Spanish eventually. Currently, Eau Claire has an English language learning program for our Spanish-speaking kids and kids of other languages. And I think that's amazing, and it's a huge asset to them, as opposed to just putting them in on their own. But I think this program would be so much better. I can't speak to this experience exactly, because I'm an English speaker and I went to school in English, but I can tell you a little bit about what it was like for me when I went to school in Germany for a year as an 18-year-old. I came in seeing myself as an excellent student. And my view of myself as a student changed really quickly, because suddenly, my focus was not on contributing to the class and being an excellent student. It was just on trying to kind of survive and understand what's going on. So I felt like I couldn't really contribute. But there were some things that helped me in terms of how I saw myself and my confidence as a student. There were teachers and other students who spoke English and wanted to speak English with me for their own practicing. There were a couple of classes offered in English that I could take, social studies, language classes. So those things were helpful for me and my personal experience in terms of it being less isolating.
Thank you.
And I hope that's something that we can give to our students in the community as well.
Thank you very much. Next up is Gerardo Lee Cohen.
Buenas tardes. My name is Gerardo Lee Cohen. I am a professor of Latin American Studies here at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. And I'm a historian. There were a couple things I wanted to, so I'm here to encourage you to vote in favor of making the dual immersion happen. I'm also a community activist. I used to be, in the past, president of El Centro de Conexión, the local nonprofit that works to build the best relationship possible between the growing Latino community and everyone else in the Chippewa Valley. From a historian's perspective, so I study the history of Latinos in the United States. And so I've read a lot of histories of places where Latinos first moved to. And so for me, moving to Eau Claire nine years ago has been an interesting experience, because I see some of the things that I've read about that happened, you know, many decades ago in other communities. And I get to see some of those things repeated. And so in that sense, I wanted to offer you a brief historical perspective in terms of how things, how the progression of education of, in particular, children whose first language is not English, has evolved, from going from having to separate those children because they were seen as slowing down everybody else, to students being punished for speaking their other, their first language in schools, to being ignored altogether as, because they're a minority, being ignored and not having their needs met because they're seen as, you know, as a tiny minority whose needs do not get prioritized, to efforts at, to get not sink-or-swim models so that students get helped to transition into learning English. And I see this kind of program of dual immersion being a fantastic proactive, not reactionary, next step to, so that these students don't feel ostracized or treated differently. But the fact that it's the 50-50 model, where they and their peers are being treated the same, and everyone is benefiting from it, I think it's a fantastic next step. And thank you so much for the efforts that you've been putting towards that. And just wanted to provide my own professional insight into how I see the trajectory of this coming along. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Bibiana Fuentes. Sorry if I butchered your name.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Bibiana Fuentes. Así que estuvo muy cerca. That was very close. I think, oh, my address is 824 Cary Drive.
Thank you.
I think it's important to think about the different constituencies that could be helped by a dual language immersion program in Eau Claire. We've heard about how the program will serve the large and growing Hispanic and Spanish-speaking population in Eau Claire. And I will tell you a little bit about why I'm here. I've been living in Eau Claire since 2002. I'm originally from Bogota, Colombia. And by now, I'm already a resident of the city for a long time. My husband and I are expecting our first child, who will be Colombian-American in August this year. I'm personally excited about the possibility of raising a child fluent both in English and Spanish. As a bicultural and bilingual child, it's important that she be able to communicate fluently to her extended family here and in Colombia. As the population of Spanish-speaking people grows, there will be many more children like ours who would benefit from this program. So in general, definitely, there is a personal reason why I'm here. But I also think about those students who don't have a different connection to Hispanic culture. I think this program would benefit them too. These children will live in an increasingly connected and global world. To prepare them for this world, we have to give them an edge in a global economy. They'll need to learn the language skills and intercultural and international competency that this program will provide. Being able to operate in the familiar context and an international one will be invaluable, an invaluable skill for these children. I'm also a professor at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. I'm part of the Languages Department and the Latin American Studies Program. And that's why I'm going to speak a little bit about how it relates to the language education at the university. Language education students at the university, if this program were to pass, it would be a great asset for them, particularly for the students- particularly for the students who are specializing in Spanish education and elementary education. The Languages Department currently has like a doorman at-home licensure for bilingual, bicultural education. We had to stop offering the specialization, because there was not a bilingual or dual immersion school within a 70-mile radius, where our students could be placed for required field experiences in the community. As the dual immersion program grows, we will have placements for our students and could reintroduce the bilingual, bicultural education license. Since there are very few universities in the area that offer this specialization, it is something that could be a hallmark for our education program at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. Besides that, this will be an excellent pool of student teachers, classroom helpers, and obviously, in the future, teachers that will come to be working at the dual immersion school in Eau Claire. Obviously, as a second language learner, as you can see, it's really hard for me to be talking to you right now, because my second language proficiency makes me a little bit nervous. But it has to be with the fact that I learn a language as an adult, yeah? And so, for me, really, obviously, it's really important that we have a program where the students can learn from the beginning, from their elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to you and your spouse. Next up is Sarah Recarte.
Hi, Sarah Chery Recarte, 839 Dorby Street. I have my speech in Spanish, but I see we're really with a four-minute count. So I'm going to try to translate as I go, so I apologize about any mistakes on the way. My name is Sarah Chery Recarte, and I've been living in Eau Claire for seven years now. I was born and grew up in Spain. And seven years ago, work and my partner brought me to this beautiful city. As someone who works in the field of education, I always research the educational programs and possibilities where I live. And personally, when I moved, I was surprised that there was not immersion school or program in Eau Claire, since according to what I've heard, Eau Claire had a significant Hispanic population. I remember perfectly that I told my husband, "Eau Claire is perfect for us, but when our children are school-aged, I would like to move to a place with an immersion school or program." Since then, I've observed that Hispanic community has grown exponentially here in Eau Claire, and it is without a doubt a part of our reality in Eau Claire. So when we found out about this project as a possibility within the school system in Eau Claire, our family was very excited. Something that began as an ideal, that we would like to search for, could now just become a reality within a number of years. We have a 20-month-old and now a baby girl on the way. On the one hand, in my point of view, an immersion program offers much more than academic benefits to our students. As a native Spanish speaker, there's no doubt of my great interest in this program. But I would like to clarify that regardless of the language the program allows the students to develop, or if there had already been an immersion program, like the one proposed when I moved to Eau Claire, within any hesitation, I would have enrolled my children in it, for Mongol, for French, for Russians, regardless of whether the language it offered was my native language or not. As I previously mentioned, a program like this offers benefits that go way beyond academic success of its participants and the language that they have the opportunity to learn. On the other hand, whether Eau Claire has an immersion program like the one being proposed is directly related, in my opinion, to the quality of the city. In my opinion, the progress and development of a city are directly related to the capacity of that city to satisfy the needs of its residents. Considering Eau Claire's very present and growing Hispanic population, it's only logical to consider this educational option as a form of inclusion and enrichment for our community. I think that this program will have a positive impact, not only for the students and families that participate, but for the entire community. My friends in Eau Claire include Hispanics, as well as native speakers in the community. And even though many of them have children who could not participate in the program or not yet school-aged, they all agree that this program can only have a positive impact on our educational system and community. The Hispanic community and Spanish language are now part of the reality we lived in in Eau Claire. Many of my students at the university come to class surprised by the fact that they had the opportunity to use their Spanish in a restaurant in Eau Claire, at the workplace, or simply in a store to communicate with someone. In this sense, it's important that we stop seeing learning as a second language as something merely academic, that we see it from the point of view of the reality we currently live in. Eau Claire does not just speak English. It also speaks Spanish, it speaks Mongol, it speaks French, and many other languages. In our daily lives, there are many other families in our community that communicate perfectly in two languages, and their daily life as a family takes place in a different language. In my home, for example, when our first child arrives, we decided that even though my husband, native language, is English, we'll go for Spanish, since our children will have less directly exposure to Spanish. This decision was obviously personal, but our family in particular, and all our friends, and everyone around us
Thank you.
really enjoy this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Kate Wilson.
Hi, my name's Kate Wilson. I live at 602 East MacArthur Avenue. Thank you for your service to the board. I can't imagine how many hours you are spending on all the materials that you were given and all the projects, so I appreciate it very much. I am here to support the dual immersion program. I heard about the program probably about a year ago, and I immediately shot off an email to the program folks that were putting together the proposal and gathering information. And I'm just so excited at the possibility of Spanish and English being taught to our kids. I have a daughter who's at MANS. She's a third grader. And then I have a son who will be in kindergarten this fall. I speak Spanish in the home with them, but they are not nearly as proficient as I would like them to be. I grew up, I'm a white, a white person from English-speaking background. My mom spoke a small, small bit of Spanish. She lived in Mexico for about a year when she was young, but she was raising twins, and I think she might have been tired. And she didn't, wasn't able to speak Spanish to us in the home. And I do remember when I actually surpassed, I studied abroad in Santiago de Chile in South America as a college student, and I remember when I surpassed my mom in Spanish and feeling really smug about it. And I hope my kids someday can feel really smug, because they overpass my Spanish abilities. That would be awesome. So it's, I think that the dual immersion would be excellent for both white students in the community, as well as native Spanish speakers and everybody in the community. When I started teaching my kids Spanish, I knew there was, there were benefits for the brain. I knew there were academic benefits. But the most striking benefit for me is empathy. And when you test kids on empathy who are bilingual, they're able to put themselves in other people's shoes much more than their monolingual peers. And that, for me, was really striking, because we need more compassionate children. We need more compassionate adults in the world we live in. And I would love for Eau Claire to be that change and to help our kids be more compassionate, and then to learn from our kids as we see that, because they'll be outperforming us in Spanish and empathy, probably, someday. So I really appreciate all the time and effort that has been put into the program proposal. And we went to one of the listening sessions. I know countless hours have been put into this program. I think this would be an amazing opportunity for both native English speakers and native Spanish speakers, for them to keep their culture and language alive as well. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Maria Segala.
Hi, my name is Maria Segala. I live at 3205 Blakely Avenue. Born and raised in the rural northwest town of Barron, I was only one of five Latino students in the entire school district. My physical features noticeably set me apart from my classmates, especially dark and brown skin after a summer break in the sun. On every road trip to Mexico, I would get excited as we approached the border. Crossing into Juarez, there was excitement of seeing people that looked like me, ate the same foods I did, and most importantly, spoke my same language. I felt like I was home in a country I knew very little about. At my young age, that was my refuge, where I was accepted exactly as I was. I could finally just be me, even if it was short-lived. Returning home, I felt isolated and so distinguishedly different. My solution, refused to speak my first language, Spanish, dreading any moment my parents spoke it in public. All I wanted to do was fit in. I was bound and determined to assimilate by disassociating myself from anything related to Latino heritage. See, if you know anything about Latina mothers, that was my major mistake, number one, two, and three. With her broken English and relentless determination, my mother enlisted the help of my young, of my middle school, high school, middle school principal, Mr. Ken Mozantine, to set the stage for the most significant day of my young life. Here I was, 12-years-old, getting my name called down over the loudspeaker to the principal's office. You can only imagine my shock to enter and see my mother sitting in his office. She proceeded a share that I no longer wanted to speak Spanish, because I was ridiculed by my classmates. He asked what was said, and I told him I was called taco and burrito. He replied, "I wish my parents would have taught us their language, German, but my mother and grandmother always sent us outside. That was a language for the adults, and us, it was English." He then said, "I will give you an example. If I have $1 in this pocket, and I have another dollar in the other, how many do I have altogether?" My response was, "Two." This is where he taught me the valuable lesson. You speak two languages. You are richer than those who just speak one language. You should speak as many languages as you can learn, and should be proud your parents care enough. And it was in that moment that I felt a sense of orgullo, pride, a turning point in accepting myself, accepting all of who I was. Language provides a connection, solidifies relationships as an intricate part of culture in which any disconnect removes a vital part of who we are. There are many studies that solidify the educational value, quantifying the achievements and long-term benefits. But, and these are paramount and should not be overlooked. But what is immeasurable is the indispensable kinship that one would not have possible without these words. Imagine yourself having no ability to communicate with your loved ones. I'm so grateful that my parents persisted so that I could, in my own words, have the ability to let each of my grandparents know how much I love them and appreciate them for their unconditional love. On a more profound level, I would never have been able to advocate locally, statewide, or internationally from marginalized communities, had I never accepted being bilingual. I don't think Mr. Mozantine ever realized the extent of his kindness. This district has a rich history of embracing each student exactly how they are and all their unique and beautiful distinguishing differences. Just think back to that moment where you felt out of place, and there was that one person who took some action so that each one of you could find the strength to persevere. The approval of the dual immersion program is your opportunity to be instrumental in giving a sense of belonging, instilling pride, and changing the lives of one future, of our future, so that one day those students can take my place and publicly share that momental story of how your voice made a life-changing impact. Tonight, you too can be Mr. Mozantine's of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I can't read the last name. It's Dave. Is it Garley?
My name is Dave Garley. I live at N. 1703 950th Street, Eau Claire. I'm going to break rank today, I guess. I'm not here to talk about your wonderful program, which sounds wonderful. I'm here to talk about, in support of the petition for the gift that has been provided to Memorial's facility upgrades. I think, I don't have anything prepped, so I just come to speak from the heart. I settled roots back in Eau Claire in 2002, raised my family, who happened to go to Eau Claire, my two kids, and my wife and I. And the reason why I think I'm here, I feel so compassionate about this, is because we have this beautiful gift donated by an anonymous provider from the community on our doorstep. When you get a gift of this magnitude, it's very difficult to really turn this down. I mean, here's the opportunity that this community has, that I've been looking for in this community since we moved here. Why can I say that? I graduated from Superior Senior High School in 1987, a long time ago. I was a three-sport athlete, so I played sports here. And in conference play was Eau Claire. And I remember coming from Superior, driving to Eau Claire, and participating in competition. And I idolized Eau Claire because of what Eau Claire stood for. It was clean, the people were nice, they had beautiful facilities. And life was great. And I always told myself, "Someday, I'm going to move back to Eau Claire, because I think this would be a great place for his family." And fortunate enough, 2002, I worked in the private sector. And I was able to pick the location to rest, to raise my family. We picked Eau Claire, okay? Because I remember those days. Through my, well, it must be 20-some years now here in Eau Claire, I'm looking at not a lot of change in the facilities. They're the same facilities that I remember seeing when I was in Superior. The same football fields, the same baseball fields, the same basketball courts. And I'm perplexed by that. Now, is it culture? I don't know. Is it the board, or the boards before you that don't put an emphasis on it? I'm not sure. But again, I'm just going to support the petition that there's a gift to make change. When we moved here, we like to give back to community. I see some of the boys I coached over the years as well. They're grown up to be young men, because it's my turn to give back, right? My wife's turn to give back, and we take that, you know, wholeheartedly. Being in private sector, I don't have the opportunity to educate and spend all the time with these kids. But I do know these kids. So I look at this opportunity as one that I think we need to take into consideration. One of the things that we get out of competition is life lessons to compete. So I got an advanced degree. My wife's got an advanced degree. I use those lessons that I took from school in competition and apply those to my personal success. The platform that we have provided for these kids is nothing short of providing that same experience, to give them the opportunity. It's just as important as math. It teaches life skills. One of the things I always left with my boys is, "Excuses are for reasons not to succeed." So I asked the board, "Don't let this be an excuse not to succeed." It's a gift, and it's on our doorstep. Let's make the best use of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Farrar.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Farrar. I live at 303 Garfield Avenue. Thanks to the school board for the opportunity to speak in support of the dual immersion program that's being considered. Like many speaking here this evening, I'm not originally from Eau Claire. About six years ago, my spouse and I moved here when we were offered jobs at the University of Wisconsin. Although we are both faculty in the English department, we also both speak Spanish. My spouse is a native speaker of Spanish, was born in El Salvador, and immigrated to the US as a young child. I took Spanish language classes in middle and high school, but didn't retain any knowledge of the language until I later moved to Spain in my twenties. Today, although I can communicate well in Spanish, I know I will never achieve a level of proficiency that I aspire to. My personal experience of how difficult it is to learn a language when instruction begins much later than is optimal, and when there aren't many opportunities to use it, informs my support of this program. My husband's experience of growing up bilingual near the US border, in a home that was a Spanish-speaking and an educational environment in English, and a community that was broadly bilingual, also informs that support. My experience here in Eau Claire, trying to raise our son, and soon a daughter, bilingual, shows me how critical this program can be for our community. Although our son understands Spanish, he typically responds in English, or only inserts a few Spanish words into a grammatical English sentence. When his grandparents visit, and we all speak exclusively in Spanish for a week or so, his language improves dramatically. So does mine. It is an immersive environment that makes language acquisition a reality. But my support for this program goes far beyond how it would serve the needs of my family. Although this meeting is ostensibly to judge interest, plenty of interest for the program, there is no doubt in my mind that the number of families who want to participate will far exceed the number of available seats. And I know that my children may not be among those who, if it is instituted, benefit directly. I think it is important to acknowledge that the people likely to be first in line to show vocal support and sign their children up for the benefits of bilingualism are wealthy, white, and highly educated. This is not a reason not to pursue bilingual education, but it is a way of knowing that bilingual education is already valued by the privileged, even as our broader Latino community is not equally embraced and valued. I believe this program will open more space for acknowledging and evaluating the existing and growing diversity in Eau Claire. I believe it can represent a crucial bridge between the distinct experiences of Eau Claire that exist. I believe that it represents a crucial bridge I believe that it represents an opportunity for inclusivity, and a practical vision for making meaningful communication possible. I'd like to live in an Eau Claire where my family doesn't get dirty looks for speaking or singing in Spanish to our child in the grocery store. I'd like to live in an Eau Claire where speaking multiple languages is broadly recognized as a strength. I'd like to live in an Eau Claire where children have the opportunity to experience a variety of kinds of excellent education that allows them to thrive in local and global contexts. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have our final speaker for tonight, Abby Green.
Hi, Board, nice to see you again. My name is Abby Green. I live at 1508 Eddie Lane. And I just wanted to give another perspective for the stadium being proposed for Memorial. I just wanna start off by saying that as a North student, it's really disappointing to keep hearing the language of, "Oh, like, it's a gift, it's a gift," when we continuously sit and watch these boards, having to make really difficult decisions about which program to cut because we're facing a huge deficit and we don't have enough money to fund these programs. Programs facing academics, help with different things, but yet, as soon as we have this gift of 1.2 million dollars, we think that we can suddenly afford that much money to put into it when we're facing all of these other issues to being cut. It's disappointing to see that we're going to invest that much money because they have the privilege of getting the gift on that side of town, because they have the money there and we don't. We face a 43% economic disadvantage when they face a 26%, and it's frustrating to see the more money coming to the more privileged side of town. I know in the presentation it was talked about bringing community together, but I want the board to look at how it will affect the community and tearing it apart from the more advantaged side and the less advantaged side of how it affects the neighborhoods around it. When we're investing into one side, it doesn't make the other side worse. I just want the board to really look at that in more of a deeper way than what we're looking at as such a wonderful gift that we're getting. I also just wanted to say that I think it's a misconception that people think that we shouldn't fix the needs that are needed for the facilities. I think absolutely, if you have safety needs and you need to upgrade it, nobody's arguing against that. It just seems unnecessary, and very questionable that we're gonna fix things that don't need to be fixed, we're gonna add on additionally when we're facing really big money issues. I just don't think that the quality of a student's education and their extracurricular activities should be determined by the size of like the student's parents' checkbook and who their connections are with, because North doesn't stand a chance against that when you look at Memorial, and that's the facts, even though it's hard to look at it, and it's hard not to get excited when we look at this big gift to get. I think it's important to slow down, hear more perspectives, and really take into account what we're doing equity-wise for all of the students. So, thanks.
Thank you. So that completes our public forum section of the meeting. So because we suspended the rules, I would entertain a motion to re-adopt the rules of order for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right. So that brings us then to item 4.1, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Harabek.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming school board events, and I'm only going to go to April 1st. On March 21st, at the Administration Building, there'll be a meeting of the Demographic and Trans and Facility Planning Committee, and that meeting will take place at 4:30. There will be a meeting of the Revenue Committee, which will take place at 1:00 p.m. on March 22nd, also in the Administration Building. Then we will have spring break from March 25th through 29th, and on April 1st, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee at 8:45 a.m. in the Administration Building, and that will be followed by a school board meeting that evening at 7:00 p.m. So tonight, we are very excited to announce that two of our educators are recipients of the 2019 Herb Cole Foundation Teacher Fellowships. So I'd like for you to join us in congratulating Nikki Anderson. Is Nikki here? Nikki, would you stand up? She's a bio-life science teacher at Memorial. And Nick Serik, who's a sixth-grade teacher at DeLonge. And Nick, are you here? Nick, I remember that. So Teacher Fellowship recipients are educators who've been chosen for their superior ability to inspire a love of learning in their students, their ability to motivate others, and their leadership and service within and outside the classroom. Nikki and Nick will receive an award of $6,000. So congratulations on that, and congratulations on your honor. And we also have a student that was recognized for the Student Excellence Scholarship. That is North High School senior Megan Pecula, right? Is Megan here? We didn't know if she was gonna be able to attend tonight. She will receive a scholarship in the amount of $10,000. Recipients of this award have demonstrated excellence in the academic arena and high motivation to achieve, and have displayed a broad range of activity and leadership outside the academic setting, and have shown strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond. We're very proud of Megan, and we wish her every good fortune as she uses this $10,000. I wanna talk a little bit tonight in my report about the inclement weather makeup. Because school was canceled again on March 13th, the board will be asked to confirm the following schedule on the consent agenda tonight. Because of this additional day, it's made a little bit of tweaking in the three-level schedules, so I just wanna go over that and say that at the elementary school, we will maintain June 7th as the last day of school for students. We will add one professional development day for staff on June 12th. Monday, June 10th, will be a building PD and staff work time, and Tuesday, June 11th, and Wednesday, June 12th, will be district PD times. At middle school, we will maintain June 11th as the last day of school for students, and we will add one professional day for staff on June 12th. Wednesday, June 12th, will be building PD and staff work time. And at the high school, we will maintain June 11th as the last day of school for students, and add one professional development day for staff on June 12th, and that will be again for building PD and staff work time. And this will give us just a little bit of a buffer in case we have to have another delayed opening. So, you know, I think that most of you know that school boards across the state have been looking at their school calendars and approving the hours of the normal school day. It's been an uncertain time in terms of scheduling makeup time for instructional minutes missed due to inclement weather. And so, Wisconsin districts have been making decisions regarding how to use instructional time missed due to that weather. And there have been a number of ways to make up that missed time. Extending the school day by adding a certain number of minutes to the school day, converting days that were originally scheduled on the calendar for professional development to instructional days, using parent conference days as full school days, reducing the number of spring break days and using those days for instructional time, and reducing the length of scheduled student lunch periods or recess time. We have used all of those, except going into the spring break time. So no matter, I think, what decision a board makes, someone or some program is inconvenienced by that. Schedules are shifted, sometimes rescheduled or canceled. And so to avoid some of these stressors, I'd like to bring to you in the first meeting in May, in a committee report, a plan to pre-identify and prioritize potential makeup days, hours for lost instructional time missed due to inclement weather, so that students, families, and staff can be prepared ahead of time for how such possible loss of instructional hours will be made, need to be made up if needed. I think in this way, we can be a little proactive. I hope that we never have another winter like we had this winter, but if we can alert students, staff, and families of potential changes before they are enacted or have to be voted upon, we can provide some predictability to all of us, and I think that would be much appreciated by our school district. So look for that report coming to you the first meeting in May, and we will get some feedback from staff on some of those decisions and bring some recommendations to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harabek. For my president's report tonight, first I wanna share, I'm excited and honored to be representing our district next week in Philadelphia for the National Education Conference. This is the one national event that brings together education leaders at a time when domestic policies and global trends are combining to shape the future for students. So I look forward to receiving new ideas and tools to bring back to the district. I'm also excited to share information about a new group for students who identify as Latino called Regeneracion. That group is sponsored by El Centro, as well as Jona. It's a group for students in middle school and high school, where they can learn about their Latino identity, community involvement, and the application process to educational opportunities. So that group meets at UW Eau Claire in Centennial Hall after the school day, and they also do provide transportation. So I will post that contact information in the president's blog. I've resent the board's self-evaluation survey to board members, so please fill that out before our meeting on April 1st. That's when we'll be having our self-evaluation work session. And finally, there was a forum held last week with all of our great candidates running for school board, and you can view that forum video by visiting valleymediaworks.org. So that's it for my board president's report and student representative's report. Molly?
All right. So students at North are still adjusting to the new schedule, as classes start earlier and lunch at North High School is shortened. Students are now signed up and registered for any AP tests that they will be taking in the spring. Student Council put on this year's winter formal this past Friday for the first time instead of DECA, after it was delayed a week to, to surprise the weather. But the dance went well. Students took the time to have fun with their friends and listen to music. On another note, however, students at North are disappointed about the contribution for the stadium that has been offered to the district. Many students feel as though it is exactly that, a contribution instead of a gift, because the school district is still expected to provide the remaining sum of money that many feel cannot be afforded. Talk about the unknown cost of upkeep is also another concern regarding this proposal. Many feel as though the proper information regarding such has not been provided. Students at North are just really hoping to see the generous contribution be used, not only to update the facilities at Memorial, to improve their safety if needed, but also to fund other programs and activities that have seen a lack of funding in the past few years that can provide all students with knowledge and life skills and creativity. Students at North would just simply encourage to look at another option that is beneficial and equitable to all students in the districts. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us then to our school board committee reports. Policy and Governance Committee?
We met this morning and worked on three different policy initiatives. We approved a language modification to modify language that we had already in place concerning expectations of a Student Success Act, so we'll come to the board next session. We received a proposal for policy from the LEAP Committee, and we have resented with modifications to the committee, and we have approved a language for procedures for custodial and non-custodial parents, which will be brought to the full board next session.
Thank you. Budget Development Committee, is there an update?
We were rained out last week. We're meeting on April 3rd.
Thank you. LEAP Committee?
We missed our February meeting due to weather, but we did have our March meeting. We finished our policy work and sent it to Policy and Governance, but it sounds like we have a little bit more work to do, since they're sending. I think I'm never gonna get that in first. You're always gonna go first, and I'm always gonna lose my thunder on that. But we will go back to work, and we have ozone scheduled to come in front of us and hopefully start working through the LEAP Committee with their presentation and their proposal. We had Arctic Zone in front of us at our last meeting and had some good discussion around that. So we'll continue our work, and we look forward to seeing what Policy and Governance asks of us next.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's it for committee reports. Is there a legislative update?
Yes.
I'll turn your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Each of the past several state budgets, as well as several laws passed in between the budgets, have made significant changes to statutory programs that permit high school students to take courses offered by post-secondary institutions while the student is still in high school, whether it was youth options program, the course option program, the early college credit program, or the Start College Now program. School officials around the state have had to pay close attention to keep local policies and procedures up to date as things have changed at the state level. Now, another round of changes could be coming. Governor Evers' executive budget bill for 1921 biennium proposes to repeal the current versions of the early college credit program and the technical college-based Start College Now program, replacing them with new dual enrollment programs that would permit qualified high school students to be enrolled in post-secondary courses that have available space without a change for tuition to either the student or the local school district. The new programs would apply to courses offered by UW system institutions and by technical colleges as well. While the proposal is currently a long way from becoming state law, it is an interesting component of the upcoming state budget discussions that Kato school officials will want to monitor closely.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres.
You're welcome.
So that brings us then to our consent agenda. So we will consider all of these items, and if you would like to pull one, please indicate that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 4th, 2019, the minutes of closed session, March 4th, 2019, the financial report, February 2019, gifts in the amount of $67,821.76 for the period of February 1st, 2019 through February 28th, 2019, payment of all bills in the amount of $4,821,543.88, and net payroll in the amount of $3,573,526.15 for the period of February 1st, 2019 through February 28th, 2019, the Human Resources and Employment Report, adoption of new policy 453.12, concussion and brain injury management, revisions to policy 164, school board member accommodations, compensation, expenses, and equipment, revisions to policy 823, access to public records, safety grant and five-year capital bid award, summer 2019 referendum bid awards, adoption of the superintendent's goals, and inclement weather makeup day proposal.
Pull that, please.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve 7.2 through 7.13.
I move a motion to approve 7.2 to 7.13.
Okay. Second? All right. And this is, they have some financial items, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Buell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wugelbel?
Yes. All right, then the consent agenda items are approved, with the exception of 7.14. Commissioner Hambach-Buell, you pulled that?
Yeah, I just had a clarification that I wanted to ask. When it talks about building PD and staff work time, usually staff had a workday at the end of school to, I know, elementary time, to kinda get everything in order for the summer cleaning, is, and putting things away, and all that kinda stuff takes, I was always the last one out of the building. So I'm wondering what building PD and staff work time means together, and will staff be given the opportunity to have that time to end the school year?
It's likely not much different than what we've done in past years. We had a workday, we had one day after children left for the summer, and the building PD really centered around looking at school improvement data, end of the year, kind of wrapping it up with the staff as a whole. That was always part of the day, and then the other part of the day was working and checkout. Probably one difference between- Probably one difference between previous years and this year's would be the expectation for a full day, for staff to stay the full day, which hasn't been the case in the past, but because this is a makeup day, that would be the expectation. So, that would be an additional couple of hours where staff could have some PD around school improvement planning and/or data analysis.
And their workday together?
And their workday.
Thank you for that clarification.
Was there anything else on that item? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve 7.14.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Okay. That motion is approved then. And with the approval of the consent agenda, Dr. Hardbeck would like to say a few words.
I would like to say a few words. With the approval of your consent agenda tonight, you approved the resignation of Diana Ziegers, which will take place in June. And Diana is here tonight. She's already standing up there in the back. And, you know, she joined us 18 years ago in 2001 as a teacher at Memorial High School, where she taught for 11 years, first as a social studies teacher and then as an alternative education teacher. She later moved to the district office where she served as a curriculum coordinator in the Teaching and Learning Department before accepting her current position as the principal at South Middle School. Diana has had many accomplishments during her time in the ECASD. She is certainly a principal who maximizes her school improvement plan. One of her most recent accomplishments has been implementing the Acres of Joy program at South, which serves at-risk students by allowing them to learn and grow in an alternative setting and having access to the Acres of Joy Ranch with the horses and being able to access that kind of therapy. She was also instrumental in bringing the Avid program to South Middle School, which is a program which is designed to prepare students academically and to give them strategies to help them be successful in school. Typically, in most schools, it is targeted towards students who are not performing at grade level. Diana has implemented this program across all grade levels and with all students so that all boats at South could rise. She's leaving us to pursue a new opportunity, and I think to begin the fulfillment of a long-held family dream of relocating to Colorado. She's accepted the position of National Curriculum Manager for Big Green, a nonprofit organization in Boulder, Colorado, which works with students in underserved urban communities to teach food literacy and health through learning gardens. Diana, you're going to be greatly missed by all of us, but we wish you all the best, and we know you're going to be successful. I also want to talk a little bit about Larry Summerfeld. I don't think he's here tonight. Is Larry in the back? Okay. Well, Larry is retiring on March 25th, and he's been working kind of a reduced schedule since he announced his retirement. I wasn't sure if this was one of his workdays or not. But Larry's also been in the school district for 11 years. He joined us as a facilities planning manager utilizing his years of experience as an architect. Larry's been responsible for many of the design work that you see in the schools across the district. In 2015, Larry began his current position as the Director of Buildings and Grounds just in time to help plan for the referendum and to implement the referendum work. And I want to say that I think he has worked tirelessly in support through the many updates that we've gone through with the referendum and through the many referendum projects. And these projects have been complex in nature. In addition to having to do the referendum work and all of the work that's incorporated into just the upkeep of buildings and grounds across the district, Larry's also taken a role in the safety grant work. He kindly accepts middle-of-the-night calls. He enthusiastically makes middle-of-the-night calls to talk to us about weather and other things that are going on in the district. So, he's really been on for, in a role that is a 24/7 role, and he always brings a gentle sense of humor to everything he does regardless of the situation. We know that Larry's going to not be idle in his retirement. He's someone who really can't sit still, and he told the principal group when we recognized him that his wife had a number of projects set out for him. So, we're happy for Larry as he begins his new chapter of his life, and we want to thank him for his service, and we certainly wish him the very best.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. That brings us then to our individually considered resolutions, the first being our dual immersion program proposal.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity tonight to share more about our proposed Spanish dual immersion program. I'd like to thank the community members that chose to come out tonight and advocate for the dual immersion program and give their voice to the initiative in front of you as someone that, someone sometimes struggles in one language. I'm humbled and privileged to advocate for the dual immersion program tonight. You could, I thought that was funny, but that's fine. But that's fine. That's right. As always with programs we bring forward to the board, we like to assign our requests to strategic plan and bringing the board's strategic plan to life and identify the areas in which the board's dollars, budget, and efforts are going to be brought forth. So, certainly in the dual immersion program, as we presented over the last several months, you can see the academic achievement that a dual immersion program would bring forward. As we presented before, students that are in a dual immersion program have the opportunity to achieve greater and different assessments, standardized and others. Students that enroll in a dual immersion program see that true fruition through the end of their fifth, or their fifth grade year will achieve in their reading scores by an advancement of seven months on standardized assessments, and then by nine months even, by the time they move through grade eight. So, really, that tells you that the value of the program is able to accelerate a student's learning almost one year ahead of their peers that are not in a dual immersion program. And that research comes from work down in the Portland School District in Oregon. Collaborative cultures certainly are present in this program. Collaboration has been essential and certainly will be embedded and essential going forward, collaborating between the dual immersion families, working with the current Longfellow families, partnerships with the staff within the building, and then, of course, the advocacy of Brianna and PLEL program that we have in the district, and then as we add our staff to the dual immersion program. So, and we're very confident in Principal Lynch's ability to help facilitate that within the building with the support from our folks at the district office. Social, emotional, and interpersonal strategic plan portion that the board has put forward, certainly the program speaks for itself here, that bilingual children have an opportunity to retain and maintain a strong sense of their own identity by developing sensitivity towards people, other peoples, and other cultures. Since bilingual students need to be aware of which language to speak in what situation, a bilingual child is certainly more apt and in tune to the needs of the listener. It's also an opportunity for a bilingual student, a student that comes to us with, Spanish is their first language, is an opportunity to see themselves more present in the classroom and in the school. And then, obviously, the partnership with family and communities stands to reasons from some of the advocacy that's heard tonight. We've worked closely with El Centro de Conexión to discuss all the pieces around dual immersion, to have those voices heard and present, present here tonight. And also, we have conducted listening sessions, multiple listening sessions throughout the community to hear advocacy from families, to answer parent wonderments or concerns, families' concerns about the implementation of the program, to listen to different staff members and their input on the dual immersion program, and we've taken that input and we've added to and presented to the board different iterations of what we bring here tonight. So, Brianna is going to talk a little bit about some of the technical aspects, do some refreshers on some of the programming that dual immersion will bring forward, then we'll visit a little bit more on budget and transportation, and then we'll take questions from the board. However, if you would like to, as we move through the slides tonight, visit on a specific slide or a point while we're presenting, don't hesitate to chime in so we can have an ongoing discussion. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. It was nice to hear everybody speak during the public forum. I think it's really reflective. I know you've been hearing from Dave and I for the past year or so, but when I think back to the journey of when this started, it was in the spring of 2016 that we started to make our site visits. So, this truly has been three years that this has been going on, you know, finally the night to vote. So, I'm looking forward to tonight. What I want to talk about is just a reminder of, we've talked a lot about the research behind dual immersion and why it should be something that the O'Clare School District is considering as a program to implement. You heard from a lot of people in the public forum about this is our opportunity to support historically underserved students while remaining an additive approach for all. So, every child who's in this program will be adding a language, but we will have these students who are coming to us who are monolingual Spanish speakers, who are historically underserved, and we can meet their need. We currently have 81 EL students in our district that are Spanish speakers. Okay? They do not have an opportunity to have this program. That's a lot of students in our district. It offers an opportunity for us to equal the playing field for all students and accrue those significant benefits of being bilingual. As Dave had mentioned, being bilingual is an asset that would be a contributing member to not only like our school district, but when you think about our community and really the global economy that we do have. Student performance, there's a lot, a lot of research out there. The most current one that David mentioned came out of Oregon showing students that was specific to reading having one year ahead on their reading achievement, and that's for all students in a dual immersion program. It does not matter their language background. There's a lot of research, too, that shows benefits in acceleration in math, science, social studies. There's new research that shows even in the arts, you see an acceleration as well. So, I have not found a piece of research that will tell you if a child is in a dual immersion program that is implemented with fidelity where you see a negative impact on their student achievement. I want to touch on the informational sessions that we did in January. We held three sessions, and we had over 60 people attend those sessions. At the end of the session, we handed out a survey. Forty-eight surveys were returned, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the information we gathered from those. Our first question asked if they had support on the school district moving forward with the Spanish dual immersion program. Forty-seven other respondents said yes, and one had said no. Out of those, we kind of asked if in this coming year, 2019, 2020, would you enter your child into the Spanish dual immersion lottery? Thirty-eight of them said yes. Two said no. One of the noes had a note on there saying that they were unsure because of the location of moving their family, having children in two different schools. Two were undecided. Two of them actually circled yes, but their children will not be of kindergarten age next year. They are younger. And then, we had two people come who were just in support of the program who don't have children. So, here you can see out of the 38 that responded yes, that will have kindergarteners next year, we asked them what their home neighborhood school was. We wanted to see where in our school district are these families and where will these students be coming from. As you can see, they're coming from all over O'Clare. We have a spattering from all of our elementary schools except for Montessori, and we did have four families come that would be open-enroll families. They are, they do not live in O'Clare boundaries, but if this program were to pass, they would choose to open-enroll their children into our school district. Next, when you approved Longfellow as the site, we went over and met with the staff at Longfellow Elementary. We have had two meetings with their entire staff. We provided one survey to all of their staff so they could provide feedback and thoughts and ask questions or express concerns. And then, we also went to one leadership team meeting in their building as well. So, I'm just going to kind of recap some of the themes from when we met with Longfellow staff. They definitely see the benefits that it will bring to their building. They see that it's going to bring more diversity to their building. It's going to bring a different language background to their building that really isn't present in their building. Some of the concerns were, they had concerns about the budget impact. They had concerns about the timeline. They also wanted to make sure with all the district boundary work going on, there were, there was questions about how this fit in to the district boundary work. They had questions on how this will impact other services in their building, specific to like counseling services, their school psychologists, some of their music, art, and fayed staffing. And then, they had a question about a program potentially taking over the school. So, I'm going to touch on those real quick. When we met with their staff in budget impact, we shared with them, but we would be sharing with you all, the board, what the budget impact will be. It's not our decision to decide how the budget dollars are used. That is left up to the board. In terms of the timeline, their staff felt it's been kind of rushed. We went over with them that this started in the spring of 2016, and there's, it's really been thought out well, and we've kind of broken it into chunks. And when we created the committee to, about a year and a half ago, Longfellow has had representation on our dual immersion committee. In terms of district boundary work, that's kind of out of the scope of our project. We know we're on some of that, but we really can't touch on that as that is not in the scope of this project. In terms of impact on other building services, when we talk about like counseling, that, you know, there's a counselor in their building or their school psychologist, those positions are staffed at a district level. So, when they do staffing, they look at how many students are in their building, and they staff those positions according to how many students are in their building. So, if the dual immersion program passed, obviously, their student enrollment would look differently. So, staffing would look differently as well. And a program of potentially taking over a school, as we've stated from the beginning, the model of districts our size is you establish a dual immersion program really well in one building, and then you expand it to other buildings. Madison School District has 13 sites with Spanish dual immersion programs out of their 27. So, the goal is to spread it to more neighborhood schools after you have one established well. So, it would not be where Longfellow would become a dual immersion school. That wouldn't be the model that a district this size would really want to follow.
So, one of the portions of the budget that can consume quite a few budget dollars is transportation. So, we want to assure the board that we're committed to the board's policies regarding transportation. You have transportation policies already in place that talk about where students are transferred from, how much time on the bus, where those locations are, and we work real closely with student transit to review routes every year. So, that's just embedded in the practice that the board expects from their administration. One of the things that we're excited to be able to do with the expansion of, the possible expansion of transportation is to also leverage some of the other stakeholders within the community. For example, Montessori Messiah, Crestview, there's been concerns over the years about transportation, what it looks like to those buildings. So, if the dual immersion program is instructed aloud and needs to add a transportation route, there's an opportunity then to also create leverage or opportunities for students, for students that maybe were stretched to serve a bit currently with transportation with the, with the addition of a route that is informed by dual immersion enrollment. So, one of the things that also we would talk about as we identify So one of the things that also we would talk about, as we identify where the students are going to come from throughout the district, is establishing pickup sites or opportunities to relay students or a transfer bus. And the board has that practice already in place now. There's several buildings throughout the district that, or a few buildings throughout the district where students will transfer from one bus to the other, and all respecting the current expectations of transportation, students' time on the bus, the students' arrival to school certainly on time, and all those pieces that we would expect. So to do a budget overview, so we'll do some overview here and then certainly like answer any questions that the board members might have. So budget impact in year one. So you can see in year one, there's a cost to purchasing some materials. You can see that transportation cost up to $36,000, and that would be a full route, AM and PM route. And as we talked about, there's an opportunity to work with some of our other families that are requesting transportation and some transportation concerns that have been out there. The addition of a Spanish BEA, so there could be, depending on where the students from the lottery are selected from, it could be a move of a Spanish BEA, it could be an addition of a Spanish BEA. All right, again, that would be dependent on where the students come from to occupy the program at Longfellow. And then you can see at the end of year one, we're projecting that as a budget dollar amount. There is some budget relief through Title III to the tune of $2,800. And then bilingual, bicultural aid is a federal aid, so there's an opportunity to apply for and receive back some costs to defray the program. And you can see what we're projecting there. So that is year one.
Is that a given? I mean, the Title III and the bilingual, bicultural, is that a given? Like, we would get that no matter what?
Yeah, so federal funding, so you're always beholden to what the, what our friends at federal government determine. There hasn't been reduction of Title III in the near future. In the previous budgets, Title III's been held harmless, I guess. And then bilingual, bicultural, actually Brianna works a bit with that grant. I'll give her an opportunity to explain it.
So Title III is a per pupil that we get for students. So this would be for Spanish-speaking students in the program who are also duly serviced for EL. We get a per pupil total. And then the bilingual, bicultural is a formula grant. So when I do that, I would submit salaries and fringes for staff who have appropriate licensure, and then we get a percent back. It's right around eight percent. So a piece to that is if we had a bilingually licensed teacher in that program, we would get about eight percent of their salary and fringes refunded back to us through that grant.
Other questions here? Then, if the board does choose to go forward tonight, this is what we would project year two costs to look like. So again, additional materials at grade one, right, it's their first cohort. Moving from kindergarten to grade one, there, we would not anticipate additional transportation cost. By adding that route the first year, there would be enough leverage and enough space elasticity in the existing routes to be able to service an additional cohort of students. Again, the Spanish BEA, anywhere from incurring, not occurring an additional cost because of students coming from other elementary schools to Longfellow with that staffing following them, could be if there's a grouping of students from, there's not a grouping of students from one specific building, but more spread throughout the district, you could see an addition of a Spanish BEA at this point. Also, we know that best practice for those early learners is to push in a Spanish BEA to assist with that early immersion process. So you find that in the research, how important it is to add that additional resource to the classroom. Then you see there's our projected costs between $9,800 and $51,000. Again, the location of Spanish BEA being the largest cost piece. And Title III and bilingual, bicultural, again, present here. So very much like the first slide, minus additional transportation costs. Then if things are going well, and things will go well, so we are into year number, we're into the third year, we're into our second grade students, right? So now you have three functioning classrooms of bilingual, bicultural, bilingual students at Longfellow Elementary School. You have, seeing again, the cost of $9,800. We don't anticipate the need for another route for K-1, 2. And then you can see the $9,800 is the cost there. So you actually have less of a cost in that year three. And then going forward, you can see the same thing happens here in year four. We anticipate, as we have that first cohort move into third grade, that at this point, there would be the need to add an additional route at this point. And again, a bit of speculation at this point, but I think fairly informed that at this point, when you have four groups of students now in the program, there would be the need to add another route. The Spanish BEA, again, flexible based on where the students come from. And again, that would be done in that annual staffing allocation that Brianna mentioned earlier. And then you see Title III and bilingual, bicultural, again, present. So you can see the anticipated costs in year four of the program. Year five looks very much like year three, and then year six as well. So an overview, we'll go to the next slide here for an overview of full implementation. So you can see some cost bumps here in kindergarten, that first cohort, one of the larger inputs into your budget with the addition of what we anticipate is one BEA and a fully funded route, transportation route. Then you can see that cost again with a BEA being added in first grade. And then, by the time we get to that third grade cohort in year four, we anticipate the need of adding a second route and possibly a third BEA. And then you can see the projected costs across the bottom, the cumulatives. So by the time that you get through year six, you can see the total costs, the total across the bottom here. And again, you see the groupings because as you start programming in kindergarten, that's where you have that, again, the BEA and a transportation route. You add a second BEA, we project for grade one. By grade three, the addition of another route. So now you have two fully funded routes. And remember, those routes to serve our dual immersion students also gives you opportunity, flexibility, or some elasticity in your routes to circle back and serve the students that we talked about earlier in Messiah Crestview and Montessori. And then you can see the costs each year as you move through grade one through five, you've got the material costs. And then the material costs will then drop off as you finish the cycle. And then you have the students that come through again at kindergarten. Couple of questions here I anticipate.
Yeah, if I could.
Pressure harder?
Thanks. So the, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the chart. So the, it looks like the main difference between the low cost and the high cost is whether that BEA will be needed or not. And that, that's determined by sort of how the enrollment shakes out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so when we look at low versus high, these are real totals. For example, for kindergarten, to run that for, for six years, a low would be 230,000 over the course of six years. A high would be something shy of 500,000 for six years. Okay, great, thanks.
So, and then, and I know you can see this in the chart, as you scaffold through, you have costs, front-loaded costs, I guess is a way to put it. So there's a cost of turning the program on, so to speak, and providing the transportation and providing the BEA. As you add the different sections, as you move to first grade and second grade and third grade, you have a decaying average of that cost, right? So there's just, as you stack the program on top of each other, right, then you've got some flexibility with the staffing that you have, who also have that economy of scale. So then you have a diminishing cost. So certainly, it's fair to say that the initial costs are.
Is there any sense of likelihood of, that, or a sense of certainty at all that a BEA will be needed at some point? It sounds like it's just a question of when, or is it a question of if?
So it's a question of, in kindergarten, the program model we would want to follow, you would have a Spanish BEA in the classroom in kindergarten. And then it's a scaffolding model, so you gradually remove that support, which is why you kind of see that pull away as the kids go through the program. So it would be, it's something we'd have in place in kindergarten. But how we staff our students is we look at it from a district level, where are Spanish-speaking students, and then we match the Spanish BEA FTEs to those students. So if, you know, depending on where these students come from, it could shift a part of an FTA from, FTE from one building to Longfellow, so you wouldn't, you know, have a full, that's just kind of all depends on where the kids come from.
Thank you.
And there are a few, not many, but there are a few BEAs right now that do serve two buildings. So that's a possibility with this staffing model as well. Again, the details come out at the allocation table and when you see where students are enrolled.
So, you know, kind of as we're ending here, I just want to bring us back to a couple of the board's goals. Goal number two is that the staff will create a collaborative, intentional, and engaging climate and culture using research-based practices to promote student learning. I highlighted intentional and research-based practices. This would be a very intentional decision as a school board and a proactive decision to put a research-based program in place to meet the need of students in our school district. It's an opportunity to provide an equitable, high-quality program for an underserved population. I know when I think about it, but sometimes equitable practices are not always cheap. And they do serve a smaller group of students, but it's to meet their need. And then goal number three is the board and the Eau Claire School District will work to strengthen connections with the community to support students. This was brought to the school district in response to two community partners. This was not brought on by an Eau Claire School District staff member. This was brought to us from the community, El Centro de Conexión de Chippewa Valley and the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. So I'm just going to end with a couple of things. During the public forum, but I'm going to use a little bit of Spanish. I don't speak a great Spanish. But I did not have the opportunity as a child to go to a dual immersion program. I pursued it later in life in college. So I'm going to read a quote from Paulo Ferreira. He is a Brazilian educator and philosopher, and he's known for his educational pedagogy in Brazil. And a quote of his is, "La educación no cambia el mundo. Cambia las personas que van a cambiar el mundo." And what that means is education doesn't change the world. Education changes people. People change the world. We're going to change the students in our district by giving them another language. So this would be something different for them to experience. And then one other thing I want to touch on, what I think people did really well during the public forum, is we talk a lot about the language piece, but we, they talked about the cultural piece, which I think is so important in our society right now. When you become bicultural, it simply raises the awareness that how you live is not the only way to live. And that's what we're going to be giving these students in this program as well. Not only the bilingualism, but the biculturalism. So I think we need to keep that piece in mind as well when we're thinking about this program. So what we're asking for tonight is for the board to approve the budget that you saw. And then later, we have lottery options that we would bring to you and ask you to approve a lottery. And I guess we're going to leave you. And if we don't do this now, you know, when? We have students and families who are ready for this program.
There's just one of, and I skipped over this, or didn't give this quite as much of an opportunity for the board to reflect on this. Went back to transportation for a moment. So I know that providing, or shortening the amount of time that students have on buses, especially in that Montessori program, has been an active issue. So Mr. Schmidt and Dr. Herbeck and Brianna and I have worked with Jim Fai on this, and we believe there's an opportunity, we're pretty confident there's an opportunity to reduce that travel time of ten to fifteen minutes or so for that Montessori student. So, and I just don't want to over, I went through that a little bit faster than what I should have, but I just want to highlight that there is an opportunity to leverage district services here. So, and certainly, a benefit of adding that additional transportation is also to serve, to serve and revisit the service provided to those families as well. So, sorry, I missed that before.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's an important point because I know that some kids are right on that Montessori route for like an hour.
Right, right, right. And that starts to go beyond what the district's recommended for transportation guidelines are for. And I just want to circle back and make sure that we just highlighted that again.
Sure. Board member, questions or comments?
Just since we're on the topic of transportation, yeah. So do we see other opportunities for, I mean, this is a, we struggle a lot with this. You know, I've been involved with LEAP as well, and LEAP, which was charged originally with setting up charter schools as well as embedded zones. And just juggle a lot with that, that balance between the autonomy and the, and the culture that you can create in a separate school, but the cost of transportation that come with it, versus the difficulties with embedding into a school and making a fit with the culture of that school and being accepted within the space of that school. So challenges on both sides. This has a little bit of both of those challenges. And both in terms of the cost of transportation and embedding. How are we doing? It was great to see some of the staff feedback and that you're engaging with the staff. What do you feel is the general perception with the staff and the principal? We know how important that is from, from LEAP, working through that embedding stuff. Get a sense of it here, some concern. Do you get a sense that those concerns are being resolved?
It's Austin, and then Brianna, you can fill in anything. So staff's concerns more wrap around what was shared with us, both in our visits with their staff and then through the survey, is the appropriate resources being allocated towards the program. So if there's a growth of students, do those other things grow, and our music and PE allocation towards library media. Is dual immersion going to be embedded within the school? And there's an understanding concern because we haven't done it yet, right? But it's important to remember that the dual immersion program is embedded into the Longfellow school. It's part of the Longfellow community, right? It's not a different program. It's the same deliverable. So math expressions, all the LA curricula that you expect us to deliver, it's done in a dual immersion platform or opportunity. Those students are Longfellow students. They're part of the Longfellow community. It is a charge for Brianna and I to make sure that the families, regardless of what their zip code is with our addresses, see Longfellow as their community. So that's our charge to work with the Longfellow staff and leadership to make sure that happens. The students, once they have their feet on the ground, they'll be well-served by a very successful Longfellow staff that do amazing things with, with the kiddos that they have. These students will be part of that Longfellow community as well. So the biggest concern is really about getting the appropriate resources there. And then it's, we haven't done it before. So there's always trepidation with that first step.
I just think I would highlight on that, too. I think a lot of Longfellow staff, when Dave and I showed up for the first meeting, had a sense of shock of where did this come from? And partly, you know, I've not that far away from, it was five years since I've been in the classroom. And as a classroom teacher, you're really busy in the daily grind of making sure your students are getting what they need. And maybe not necessarily watching all the board meetings or knowing what's going on, because you're busy in your classroom. And I explained to them that the committee, who we chose to be on the committee, was very intentional. It wouldn't have been appropriate to start having classroom teachers from Longfellow on that committee because we pulled in people with expertise in the community to be on that committee. And then we had their building administrators part of that committee as well. But I do think that's been part of the struggle in that building is they felt they were taken off guard a little bit. And rightly so, that was more of a surprise to us because we've been living this journey since 2016. So I think it's going to be a constant reassurance of, this is going to be an asset to your building, and we're here to support you to make the transition smooth. But I do think that was one of the big things that at least I got when that first meeting, when we met with them.
I, I first want to thank the entire team and the committee and the staff who've put so much time and effort into this, this whole process, which is.
who've put so much time and effort into this, this whole process, which has been a long process. To me, in looking at this, obviously, we're, we're looking at this issue. We're considering this issue in the midst of a lot of other difficult decisions that we're making as a board. But I, I do feel that this, that this proposal deserves its, its, its due process and its due consideration on its own. In the context of a $140 million budget, when you look at the, the line items here, to me, this is a reasonable but worthwhile investment in our district's future. And this serves a group of people that we consistently have said for years that we want to serve better. And this serves that population. "Real education should consist of drawing the goodness and the best out of our own students. What better books can there be than the Book of Humanity?" That's a quote from Cesar Chavez. And I believe it is so fitting for what we're talking about tonight. And I'm excited that we're talking about this tonight because this proposal brings us further towards meeting our strategic plan goals. It supports linguistic, academic, and social growth through evidence-based approaches, researched-based approaches that are culturally relevant. When families look at us in comparison to other systems and other districts, where they might move or where they might locate as, as an employee, they will see this program and that will set us apart. When educators are searching for their first district or their next stop in their career, programs like this will set us apart. My little sister right now is a student teacher in a fourth grade classroom in the Milwaukee Public Schools German Immersion School and sends me pictures and videos. And I, I, every time I see those, I, I have in the back of my head, obviously, this proposal. To me, this program will continue our work as a school system to become a global 21st century system that is focused on developing a global workforce and global citizens. And to me, this program is just the beginning of a culture shift that can and will transform our school district and our community at large into more of a global community than it's ever been before. So tonight, I know there are questions. There are still things that even after tonight's vote, we'll have to work through. But as far as the vote to adopt and fund this program, I'm in and I will be enthusiastically voting yes in support of this program. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank everyone who's, who's worked on developing this and all of the people, young and old, who spoke tonight in support of it.
Commissioner Chris.
I will also say thank you to you who have provided leadership to putting all this together. I've seen you working and advocating and, and interpreting the minds of the community that by themselves have spoken up tonight. I was glad to hear about your references to the research done in Portland because they have updated their research, published about 12 or 13 weeks ago, a report on their work. So I have written some notes to share with my colleagues in the board. They say that the dual-language immersion programs, where students are given academic instruction in two languages, are becoming increasingly popular due to the economic, cognitive, and academic benefits bilingualism may offer on students. And I speak about that on first person. I am a bilingual, bicultural person. Because the dual-language immersion offers specialized instruction, it's often assumed that they cost more to implement than monolingual programs. For example, they need qualified bilingual teachers who understand the different program models as well as teacher professional development. That is true. They also need curricula and instructional tools in languages other than English. Moreover, logistical costs in dual-language immersion programs need to be considered, including the process of enrollment in the dual-language immersion programs, which requires the management of slots and transportation for students in these programs. While many studies have examined the academic impact of dual-language immersion programs, there is scant research on the costs of these programs, but Portland has done it. And I'll highlight this, that their latest study explores the costs of these programs and monolingual English programs in Portland public schools. The study aims to uncover differences in these programs, spending overtime, and analyzes the processes by which these programs are connected with students' achievement. Portland has a long history of supporting dual-language immersion programs and uses a lottery process for student admissions into these programs. In 2012, Portland partnered with the Institute of Education Sciences, the U.S. Department of Education, R A N D Corporation, and the American Councils for International Education to conduct a comprehensive study of their dual-language immersion programs, including academic impact and implementation itself. In this newest study, researchers examined the annual costs of dual-language immersion programs compared to monolingual educational sources of these costs. Then they looked at the ways in which these programs' enrollment, spending, and classroom characteristics size are, are connected to the relationship between immersion access and student achievement. And finally, they explored differences in the effects of participation in DLI, dual-language immersion on English language arts and math achievement by student race and ethnicity. They have found three important things. The first one, they found that the resources were distributed equally across dual-language immersion programs and monolingual English programs. But an analysis of school-level and district-level spending revealed that dual-language immersion programs incurred slightly higher spending at the central office due to do main factors. That is, the need of qualified staff to provide specialized professional development and support to the curriculum department to provide compatible curriculum in the partner language, which are you here. So we already have that investment done. Second, findings highlighted that the additional, an additional cost of $100 per student was associated with a positive impact on English language arts achievement. $100 is a very small investment. Moreover, findings show that students enrolled in dual-language immersion increased English language arts achievement by an additional 8% on average across grades, which is what you made reference earlier. And third, findings indicated that English language arts, there are more positive effects for African-American students than for white students in dual-language immersion programs. These findings were not statistically significant, but show interesting trends regarding the differential impacts of dual-language immersions on students' subgroups. And I think that that's key for us because we have to reduce and close that achievement gap. And the outcomes of a program like the one you have been so careful to put together will guarantee those cascading effects. Not just for those who are in the program, but those around them. So I, I, I am very grateful for the work you've done. Thank you, very thankful for the leadership. And I will ask my colleagues in the board to support the program.
Thank you, Dr. Horace.
Mr. Humboldt.
Yes. I support the program too. I think every, all the data and information that you have supplied to us this evening was a great deal of work. And I appreciate that. And I am not saying what I'm about to say because I am against the program by any means. I am not. And the fact that it's shovel-ready right now for us down the road to do is amazing. I was able to attend one of the listening sessions. And at the conclusion of the listening session, I asked the people in the room if they were really aware of our budget and where we stood right now in the Eau Claire School District. And I didn't have anybody raise their hands. So I need to make that connection now as a responsible board member for us to take this, these things into consideration. Dave Garley, when you explained, or you, I wrote this down, 20 years' facility seemed to be the same when you came here to live. It's been a little over 20 years since revenue caps went into effect and they have affected us ever since. And we are very much right now in a revenue problem, not a spending problem. We have not been able to keep up. We are working at a deficit. So I want to just list a few things here that we have had brought before us as a board that I'm torn about because we have a strategic plan that pulls out priority areas. I would have had liked as a board to have had a work session with all board members kind of prioritizing what we can agree to spend our limited budget on. If, if I thought we had the money to do this, I would, I would do it without hesitation. When I looked at our strategic plan, I see many initiatives that have been put before us for funding. And I've kind of looked at those areas that is in our strategic plan, the whole child, the academic achievement, student social emotional growth, collaborative cultures, high-quality staff, family, community partnerships, post-secondary success for all. But as I look at our conversations with our employees and the fact that we're looking at their benefits at this point in time, that affects all of our staff. They have given up salary over the years to have those benefits. And if we are going to spend something on something, we have to cut something else. That is what our budget is right now. So there are other things that I think about. Like if I were going to think about our staff and dual immersion, that's a non-choice for me. I want them both. But I have to pick our staff. They are the, they are the, the, the people that make this district be what it is. They're important. And other things that we've been faced with as a school board, we had to do a three-year refresh on iPads because we couldn't afford to do them all. We had to decide between the second year of a mentor program for our new teachers or if we were going to buy band uniforms for $50,000. So you can see, when you look at this over time, I have some concerns. And it isn't because I don't want the program. I do, I really, really do. We're also looking at a $1.2 million memorial piece. And that money too, I don't know where that's coming from either. So there's been other things that I've noticed too about not filling positions right away to save that money. We've cut millions. And I can remember when this started back in the 1993, 94, within five years, the district had already cut $35 million out of the budget. I've been very close to this process in the state of Wisconsin. I want the people here that want this program because I want it to, I want you to join me in helping to advocate for a strong biennial budget for your public schools because that is where the problem is right now. And that's where we need to be spending our time so that our district can be solvable for what we need to do for all the kids in our district. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Commissioner Vu.
All the good things were said. I'd like to be short. I think it's an overdue that we intentionally look at what the district's needs are. Ideally, when we identified the strategic plan, we should have come up with intentional program such as this. For some reason, that detail did not came forward. And now it appear like this important project is competing with other priority, which is a financial hardship in this, in the district. If it was a district initiative at first, we may not have to face with this individual approval for each of the initiative. However, even though we are trying to align what is being presented as part of relating to the goals of the district, that is better than not aligning and not bringing up that importance of alignment. The fact that two of the goals match with this program in itself is weren't enough decision to make. Secondly, the quote that you provide tonight, if not now, when? The question can also be posed as if not you, who? In other words, if we at this moment don't make this decision today, who will tomorrow? This community is here to serve everyone else. And if we were to continue the traditions, it only mean closing the door to people around us in terms of relationship. Relationship tied to a lot of what the district strive to do. Imagine if you don't have a communication means with your neighbors. Imagine if you are the field and your interest isn't brought to the classroom, what inspired the individual to learn? In other words, Hispanic is on the rise. And the content has to be a mirror to the district teaching. In a way, it inspired the learners. And learner is across the board. The mainstream, the traditional, plus the newcomers. In this case, we are on the rise to predict the needs of the future. It's the right thing to, to be intentional. It's the right to say what we, to do what we said we want to do and not be, not be shy about it. I take a look at the budget, yes. This year perhaps will cost us about $50,000. And I believe that would be in the bigger scheme of things, more. But if we were to be more intentional, next year's budget and the year after that, we need to really reprioritize what's in the district's budget. But this year, we are looking at only about $50,000. Total, about a million, I, I can see that. But by that time, it will be about six years from now. So we have room to be more intentional and be responsible about it. Sorry, I said I'm short, but actually, short means just to ask for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu. Did you have, Commissioner Bika?
Thank you for this work. And I, I do hope that someday we'll be able to say that all students in the ECASD are bilingual. I wanted to follow up on an earlier question from Commissioner Harder. And that's about the Longfellow staff. And I think we are asking something of the staff. And ultimately, Longfellow staff will ensure the success of this program. They identified a number of, I think, important, very thoughtful questions and concerns in the times that you met with them. And I believe that it's our responsibility to provide responses to each, each of those questions and concerns, including the one about a 2020 implementation. And I wonder when we're going to, can we and how will we respond to the staff?
You mean if the implementation timeline were pushed back a year with the 2020 implementation?
I'm asking about, have we, have we given an adequate response to each question generated by the staff members? That's what I'd like to make sure happens, including the one about an implementation timeline.
When we talked about the implementation timeline, we had told them that we had shared with you the implementation timeline from the start. That's what we've stuck with. When they asked if there was a different option, we said if the board had asked us, we could put together a different implementation timeline. But that hasn't been asked of us to create alternate timelines for this program.
I'll just speak from my own perspective that I, when we initially selected Longfellow, for myself, certainly, I, I didn't understand some of the perspectives that they brought forward. And I would have liked to have given attention to those perspectives had I been thinking more clearly about it. And so I want to make sure that they're attended. And so I want to make sure that they're attended to.
I just want to say thank you to Dave and Brianna. You've done a tremendous amount of work, and we certainly appreciate that. I also appreciate all the community members that have come out tonight to talk about some things. They raised some points that I had thought about, but also in a perspective that I hadn't thought about. I most definitely support this program. I think one of the interesting things that was mentioned was that there isn't another program like this in a 70-mile radius. And I don't know how accurate that is. Obviously, that was a community members' data. But if it's even close to being accurate, I think, as you've said earlier, Jo, that puts us out in front in this area. And some of this is, you know, if you take it down to the level of, well, if we become the magnet for this type of program in the area, that's a revenue generator for us. But I think that drives this less for me than a couple points you made, Charles, which was, this program really does meet some of our stated goals. And some of those goals are, some of our priorities are closing that achievement gap and providing equity for all of our students. And it would be hard to think of something that was tailored as well to that really, I mean, when we talk about trying to find things that increase student achievement and close these gaps, it just seems to me like we aren't going to find anything that's more cost-effective or more maybe directly tailored for this type of, for accomplishing those goals. So I'm very much in support of this program.
Commissioner Torres, would you like to make a motion as our committee member who served on that regarding the adoption of and funding for this program?
I would like to make a motion to approve, to approve the proposed budget and to continue with the process of, the lottery process, which is what they are asking.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Harder? Just a brief, on the topic of the budget again, this, as we looked at about $1 million over six years, it's kind of equates to, if you look at it from the perspective of staff, it's about one and a half FTE, I guess if I got my funding right. Looking at maybe $90,000 per staff on average. I think it's, honestly, I think it's a bargain from that perspective. And it's, there is a question though that I, trying to put this in the context of other programs, which we've continually had to do here. How many, if it was brought up, I missed it, how many students are we talking about in each level based on this chart here as they move through?
The kindergarten class size we would target would be about 24 students. And then that would, those cohorts would move forward. Obviously, you'd have, maybe you'd lose a few, but also you would have a waiting list where you could...
But targeting about 24 for each grade level?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, well, I failed to do it in my first set of questions, but I will echo whatever you want to said here, which is, this is a great idea for the district and a great idea in general. I do have some concerns about the budget, but I think when you look at these numbers, you've clearly worked hard to bring them down to what I have to assume is an absolute minimum of what we could do here. I think it looks very affordable from that perspective, and I will support it.
We were asked, the last thing that we presented, to be more cost certain and as transparent as we can, and I think that we've struck that balance. We don't anticipate any unforeseen cost that isn't laid out in front of you. Also, we're quite certain with the research that we've done, this is predictive as we can be at this point, and also deliver the program to the efficacy that the research shows us. And I'll also follow district guidelines and district direction.
Do we have a way to track this over the course of the next six years, to sort of, at least in an annual basis, to sort of report back in? Can we build that into, I know it's certainly possible, there's no question about that. Is there a way to build it in so that we can make sure that the board does get those updates and that we're tracking with what was projected here roughly?
Yeah, and I think if it passes, the best experience would be for you all to go into the classroom. It's really cool to see, like, live in person, a dual immersion program. It's just, it's really cool to see.
Secretary Iverson, would you mind reading the motion back?
That the school board would approve the funding for the ECASD Dual Immersion Program for the 2019-20 school year was what they had recommended.
Okay. So are there any other comments or questions before we vote on this? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
I sadly say, I don't think our budget supports it, so I need to say no.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lugamill?
Si.
That motion carries, six to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us then to approval of the formation of the Ad-Hoc OPEB Committee and the committee charge. So I will just walk us through this really quickly. So at the, after our discussion at the last meeting, we moved forward with sending out an update to all staff and soliciting committee applications through an online form. And last Friday, Dr. Hardbeck and I met to review the applications and select individuals for the Ad-Hoc OPEB Committee. The OPEB Committee has, I believe, 19 members. So 19 of our 22 buildings are represented? Or is it 20 members? Okay, so 20 of our 22 buildings in the district. So it includes non-affiliated representatives, certified staff, hourly staff, itinerant staff, and employees that are not impacted by OPEB. And as you can see, if you recognize any of the names, the committee is made up of veteran staff who've been a part of these kinds of projects before, and also some staff who are newer to this kind of a process of engagement. So that's our committee makeup. And the charge of, at least that we're recommending to be approved tonight, and the charge of the committee, as it's currently written, shall be to review, study, and discuss OPEB options, including stipends, health and dental insurance rates and plans, married couple benefits, and coverage for single-family employee-plus plans. The Ad-Hoc OPEB Committee shall meet on an as-needed basis and provide a full report to the full board by June 3, 2019, with recommendations for board approval. So that's the current charge of the committee and the makeup that we are recommending to the board. But if any board members have any comments or questions or would recommend changes, now would be the time to do that. Yes, Commissioner Vu?
What is the significant of June 1, 2019?
I think that the, we wanted to give the committee enough time to have multiple meetings, but we also knew that the board has asked for this committee with kind of some specific parameters, that we want to continue to study these areas and have some forward movement on it. So I think that was the primary reason. That was our recommendation. So they have throughout, obviously, the committee would be formed this month. They'd be scheduled maybe perhaps late this month, but certainly next month, throughout April, and as well as throughout May. The other reason why we thought that would be important is because for our staff, making their individual choices to know by the end of the school year if there would be any recommendations or anything like of that nature, just so that before the end of the school year, there's a sense of closure regarding what is the school board doing, going to do or not going to do regarding these various topics. So I think that was the rationale for the date. Commissioner Harder?
Well, I have a little bit of a concern. I think June 3 is an okay date to target. I have a little bit of concern about, we've used the word holistic in the past on this topic, and looking at, I mean, the basic formula here is that OPEB cuts will not really help our budget for a few years. And we have sort of more urgent needs for our budget. And we will not be able to avoid looking at other areas of cut, possibly to areas of compensation. And so my interest in holistic is looking at the fact that we're touching compensation. It's something people are concerned about. OPEB is one piece of that. And it's one piece that will not solve our immediate problems. And so we have to settle it. I'm not trying to say, let's put it off. I'm trying to say, is there a way to, maybe we even leave the charge the way it is with June 3, but to just to couch it into a more holistic context of, and there's more to come, almost certainly?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that we articulate that all options are on the table, not only as far as things that would yield savings to the district, but also in bringing new revenue to the district. And we're approaching those things hopefully with just as much vigor and excitement. But I guess as far as your question, Commissioner Harder, are you thinking that this specific committee should talk about more topics than those discussed with the June 3 deadline to bring back more to us, not just OPEB? Or are you thinking that there should be a separate group that would look at a different topic? I just, I'm wondering what you would want to include in the charge, if you would want to modify this one, or if you would want to have a different process?
I think it's dangerous to expand this. This is already going to be a lot to take on between now and June 3. But I'm also concerned about trying to settle this in the absence of other things that we know are going to need to be addressed, still being open. I think it's going to be challenging with that sequencing.
Yep.
So I think you raised a really important point. And since we went into the compensation study three years ago, four years ago, we've talked about a number of things additional time. We've talked about increments. I mean, we've had many, many discussions about those things, and they've always been kind of put to the side. So perhaps after this committee finishes their work on OPEB, another committee could be formed to look at those other matters that are hanging out there that would perhaps have a more immediate impact on our budget.
I think that's a good way to think of it. I wonder if, if just a small expansion of this could include something about narrowing down that list or something, you know, as a staff engagement piece. And we know we'll have ideas from other channels, but in terms of this staff committee to study OPEB, to look at it, some of these other possibilities, at least to make a list for that to come out of this, for things to consider as a follow-on.
You're saying you want that, this committee to do that, or you want this to be, do you want this to be done in tandem?
It could be done in tandem.
I mean, does the Budget Development Committee have the capacity to do that? Or are you thinking it should be a broader group?
I think the Budget Development Committee could certainly make a list. Like this one, I think, I'm interested, as one board member, I'm interested in hearing the staff's perspective on not only the OPEB question, but the broader context as well.
Okay. So I guess what's your, do you want to just leave it how it is for now?
We can leave this, I guess if we can get another, the more broader contextual work in process in parallel.
I think we certainly should flush that out and after this meeting, and perhaps put it on the budget agenda.
Yeah.
You know, and I would, at some point in the next couple of months, it'd be cool if we could get the revenue people and the budget people to come meet together, you know, because there's a lot of interesting work and a lot of creative energy that's taking place right now.
Absolutely.
So, and positive things, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, we can, I'll talk to somebody on budget and see if we can.
Yeah, you might know the chairperson of that committee.
Yeah, I might know somebody.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Jo?
Yes, Commissioner Bika?
Clarification. So the report is to be made on June 3, by June 3, or on June 3, but the actual board approval, it doesn't mean approve and adopt?
No.
The recommendation, but just to approve the report?
Yes, we'd receive the report on June 3. It would be a committee report at that meeting. And then what the board would choose to do afterwards would have to be put in agenda setting and go through that process. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other lights. So I would entertain a motion to approve the formation of the Ad-Hoc OPEB Committee and its committee charge.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, that motion carries.
President Lugamill, just to confirm, that includes the membership as well. You didn't say that when you were reading it off.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said formation of, I'm sorry.
The formation of the committee.
Yes, and the membership. I, hopefully, that's a given. That'd be a really lonely meeting, just a bunch of chairs. Okay, so that brings us then, we're adjourning to committee, and our first committee report and item for discussion is an update on ECASD enrollments. Ms. Kohler?
Are they already up, Patty? I just wanted to take a little bit of time today to talk with you about enrollment, what enrollment looks like at this point in the school year. You can see, we've recently completed our second Friday enrollment report to the DPI. And at that point in time, we've reported 11,331 students. The number up at the top, 11,331, is a little bit different than the number that you'll see down below in current enrollment, pre-K-12 as a district. And that's because 43 of the students that are reported up above are three-year-old Head Start students, so we take those kiddos out for our pre-K through 12 district numbers. But what you can see here is a comparison of where we were in January 2019 compared with what the Applied Population Lab projection said, where they said we would be around 2019-20 and 2024-25. And so it looks like, for the most part, we are right on track with where that study indicated we would be by next year at this time. I wanted to take a little bit of time just to talk about what this looks like as far as where our children land. If we break down each of these levels, so you can see here, for example, we've reported out K through 5, 4,785, 6 through 8, 2,401, and 9 through 12, 3,226. If we break those down by grade level, you can see what each grade level band looks like. So this from left to right is 4K through 12th grade. There's a few things that I notice when I look at this graph. One of the things that I notice when I put my principal hat on is it's very helpful for principals to compare their outgoing class with their incoming class. So as an example, right here, if I compare, if I'm a middle school principal, here are my eighth graders that are graduating, and here are my fifth graders that are coming in. So you can see here, I'm going to have more fifth graders coming in than I have eighth graders graduating. If these are my seniors, and I go over here to the eighth graders, again, I'll have more eighth graders coming in than I do have seniors going out. So when principals look at these numbers, that's one of the things that they look at because what that translates into is a net increase in their building. because what that translates into is a net increase in their building. You will notice that 4K is the highest bar here. We actually draw quite a few open enroll students into our 4K program, primarily because when families work in Eau Claire, they tend to have childcare in Eau Claire, and it's very convenient for their children to attend 4K at their childcare sites. I also think it's interesting to look at this, if I compare the overall number of students in high school versus elementary, for example, here if we compare our seniors, I don't know where my mouse went, there it is. If I compare our seniors to our second graders, if I compare the 11th graders, the juniors, to our first graders, and I compare the 10th graders to the kindergarten, you can see that our younger bars are higher in each of those cases than our older bars. And so that's good news for us. What that means is, over time, it's going to translate into a growing enrollment and a growing district, which is just where we want to be. In fact, if we take the enrollment trends over the last five years, you can see them there. The bars here, notice there's only a 250 student difference between those lines, between the major grid lines. So there is some difference in our enrollment, but you can see there that the trend line is projecting us to continue to grow, which I said was good news for us overall. And so with that, if there are any comments or questions regarding enrollment, I can take those at this time.
Commissioner Hambukwale?
I have one for the Revenue Committee, that maybe if we could market a little bit of the Eau Claire School District to our 4Kers and get them to stick around longer, we might get some open enrollment later on.
Yes, yes.
Add that to our spreadsheet. There's a lot on there. Anything else? Anyone from the audience have a question?
I had another one.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Hambukwale.
I'm sorry. What did the third Friday count in January compare to back in the fall?
It was almost identical. I think it was plus or minus really only five students, or something like that.
Thank you, I couldn't find it.
I don't remember, don't quote me on that, but it was not significant.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't, did anyone in the audience have a question? Okay, all right. So that moves us then, thank you, Ms. Kohler, for this information.
You're welcome.
And that brings us then to our next agenda item, which I believe you're staying up here for, along with Ms. Johnson, the update on the high school athletic field proposal.
I am. And Ms. Johnson and I are going to split this. So I am going to start off and just review a little bit about the proposal that's been before you a couple of times related to Memorial High School athletic fields. We've shared earlier that this proposal hits the mark on partnerships with families and community, and once constructed, it'll also address academic achievement and social emotional growth. Just as a reminder, the proposal before you calls for a synthetic turf surface at Memorial High School, along with resurfacing the current track. There would be a main entrance to that athletic facility and improvement of the current event facility. So one of the challenges with the Memorial track area right now is some of the field events, such as the pole vault area, the long jump, triple jump, discus throwing area, and shot put area are challenging and not always in the safest of locations. So as an example, I believe it's the, I believe it's, I don't know what it's called, high jump? Yes, I think it's called the high jump, when kids jump over the pole. Yeah.
Makes sense.
You can't, you can't do that and have running events at the same time, because the high jump takes up part of the track. So that's one of the concerns, or illustrates one of the concerns with the field at this time. The proposal would also have lights and a scoreboard, because the interior of the track would offer opportunities for gameplay, both for soccer and for football. We've also heard that it would be large enough that you could play some baseball or softball on it as well. One of the things that we've heard quite a bit about are equity concerns between North and Memorial High Schools, should this proposal be accepted? So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the comparison between the two schools at this point in time. You can see here, this is an aerial view of Memorial High School on the left and North High School on the right. And you can see here that both of our schools have soccer and football fields. They both have some baseball and softball fields, and they both have tennis courts. But there are a couple of differences that you might not notice just looking at them visually. So I want to take some time to talk about what those differences are. So when we compare here, you can see, for example, that Memorial is a bigger building than North High School, but North High School has more green space than Memorial. If you look at the gym spaces, Memorial has a larger auxiliary gym, and North has a larger game gym. Looking at the rest of the chart, you can see there are also some differences in the weight room. The Memorial weight room, as part of the High School Athletic Council, I hear quite a bit about that, just because of what they're allowed to offer, or what they're able to offer with the smaller weight room compared to what North can offer. North does have a rubberized training hallway, Memorial does not. There's a hockey training area at North High School, there is not one at Memorial. North has a pool deck, a viewing area in their pool. There's also a full-size baseball field at North High School, and it looks like Memorial has baseball fields, but they're actually not regulation size. So you'll find that the freshman team or the JV2 team might practice there, but you won't find a varsity team practicing there because of the size of the field. North has team dugouts on their fields, and if you look at the number of softball fields that North has compared to Memorial, there's quite a difference there as well. Field spaces for football and soccer also hold some differences. Currently, Memorial has four fields. Two of the fields are shared among sports and/or teams. North has six fields on their green space, designated fields for all sports and all teams. One of the questions also that's come up is, because this is funded through a donation, is it typical for the district to funnel donations to one school or another? So I just wanted to asterisk the areas in some of the differences that you see between the two schools, areas that were funded through community donations. So the rubberized hall, training hallway, the hockey training area, and the team dugouts at North were all funded through community donations.
I'm sorry, but we don't do questions at this part. That'll come.
All right, so now to talk a little bit about the donation and what that would look like. So I don't think we got into as many details of this in the previous times, and so we've learned a little bit more, and we wanted to share that with the board as well as the community. So the total donation from the community donors is a total of $1.2 million. And if you add up all of the squares that are shown on the board, they total $1.2 million. The donor stadium, the naming rights, the biggest piece at the top of the scoreboard, that would be proposed to be a $500,000 donation. And that would signify naming rights and could be contracted for 10 to 15 years, is what the proposal is. The remaining spots would be considered advertising and would range from $10,000 to $80,000, and the contracts would look at a three- to five-year time span. In addition to that, as those contracts are renewed, those funds would be set aside in a separate nonprofit, and they would pay for any maintenance and repairs and upkeep that are needed to this facility. The other thing that I learned is that the donors would solidify the advertising and the naming rights slots, including the contract creation, and then the district would approve the contract and the advertising to ensure that it is in compliance with district policies or rules and regulations that we would need to follow.
Abby?
Yes.
Quick question for you.
Sure.
So there's, I'm assuming that given there's slots for advertising all around here, are all of those filled in right now? Do we know that all of those are taken? In other words, committed? My understanding, based on what you just said, was that the person that's, or people that are donating this are taking charge of filling in those spots? Is that what you mean? And then the school district just approves those? Do you know if those are all committed at this point?
I do not know if they're all committed at this point in time.
Okay. So is there any sort of, if we're saying that $1.2 million is made up of all these, right? Is there any sort of discussion about what if they don't sell all those?
Yes, yep. I did have that conversation last week, and they would, they're committed to $1.2 million. And however that looks.
However they get that is however.
Correct.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome. So then, really to talk about, what would the district need to do, and what are the ideas that we have? And so we wanted to present them kind of in buckets of what does that look like? So the first bucket would be to reprioritize the five-year capital plan. For 1920, I want to remind the board that we prioritized the culinary project, the safety grant, and the referendum projects, because we knew that was going to take a lot of our staff time, and we wanted to get those projects, especially the referendum projects, done in that three years that we had committed to. And with the 1920 five-year capital plan, we've already bid, and the budgets have already been approved by the board for that plan. If we look at the next year, 2021 and beyond, you know, we typically put $1.6 million into our budget for the five-year capital plan. And so we would have to identify and likely reprioritize what would that look like in the next year. When the five-year capital plan is determined and kind of starts, the principals are working with the building service managers and many times the custodial staff to identify what are the needs, and then they bring it kind of up to the Buildings and Grounds Department, and they look at it as a team and figure out where does a priority need to be made? Is it something that needs to be done right now, or is it something that can be put on the list and, you know, just make us aware of it and then look at that plan? The needs are listed by building on the Buildings and Grounds website, and so if anybody wants to go and look at that, it's out there, and it talks about all of the things that we're aware of currently. And then there could be some things on there that we know, but hasn't had been time slotted yet in the course of that next five years. The other reminder for the 1920 capital budget, we have got that set at $500,000 for this 1920 year. And again, that's because we were prioritizing the culinary project and the safety grant. The referendum funds were set aside separately when we issued the debt. Okay, so then the next topic would really be to issue debt. We have a couple of ways that we can do that. I range them in the shortest to the longest time period. So if the board chose to move forward and wanted to issue debt, the quickest way to do that would be through a state trust fund loan. And that's a basic application. The board would have to approve a resolution, and it would be sent to the state for their approval of the funds. I would anticipate that could happen within 60 to 90 days of a board resolution that would have been approved. If we wanted to go to the next level, that would be utilizing Fund 38, and that's outside of having a referendum to issue debt. The board would adopt a resolution to issue the debt, state what the purpose is for, and then we would publish a petition to the taxpayers. And then that would be out there for 30 days for the community to respond to and provide feedback on that debt. We've done that twice here in the Eau Claire School District. The most recent one that we did was for the referendum debt that was issued. The referendum question, you might remember, gave us the authority to levy for those debt payments, but it didn't give us the authority to issue the debt. And so that was the most recent time that we utilized that to issue debt. And then the last option, which is the most lengthy option, would be to go to referendum for that. And the earliest date we could go to referendum currently is February of 2020. And so again, when I'm talking about shortest time length to longest, that's the three options. Then we expanded our ideas in two.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. With the piece about the non-referendum debt issuance, with the board adopting a resolution, I don't recall how it all went last time, because I was the student rep at that point.
Sure.
The piece about publishing the petition, taxpayers have a window.
Yep.
Now, how does that work if taxpayers object?
If the taxpayers object, then we can't issue the debt. And we have to work with the attorneys, and then you would likely either go back and do a full referendum, or you would reconsider.
And what constitutes an objection? Like one person comes to a meeting and says, I don't want it?
Um, there's a formal process, and I'd have to work with the attorneys of what is that guidance, because the one that I was involved in, we didn't have any petitions on.
Got it. See, that's, yeah, I'm interested to know what that process is.
I could certainly find out and provide some additional information to the board.
It's an important tool that a district has for any project, not just this. So it's, I think it'd be good for us to know the ins and outs of that.
Okay, I can research that. Okay. So then we kind of led to fundraising, and what would that maybe look like? And so we brainstormed a few ideas, and we talked about bleacher seats. Perhaps we could sell bleacher seats or a section of seats, and then we could do an engraved name plate, and that could be a way to fundraise. We also talked about doing paver bricks. I'm sure most people are familiar with Irvine Park, and they, when you go to Irvine Park, they have the bricks with the names engraved on there. And so you could do something similar to that. You could do different-sized bricks, you could do just all the same-sized bricks. But that would be a way that the district could fundraise some additional dollars, again, to lessen that budget impact of the $1.2 million. And keeping in that same idea would be looking at advertising along the fence. And so there would be a couple of things that we'd have to research. We'd have to look at, what does the city ordinance say that we can or can't do, knowing that it's right along Claremont Avenue? And then we would also want to make sure that it's appropriate for students. So we put a picture of Hobbs, I'm sure most of you are familiar with this, but that's one of the ways that they raise funds for their ice rink, is to have advertising there. And they had a variety of different terms and sizes and all the kinds of things. And so that was just another idea that we had come up with that might be an option for the district as well. All right. So then really, it's just the next steps, and what does that look like for the board? So obviously, today's discussion, we've provided you some additional information, and there needs to be a board decision on April 1st of 2019. So we would ask agenda setting to put this on for a vote on April 1st. If that vote would say yes, then we would anticipate the final design with work in 50 days, bidding for 21 days, construction of 114 days, and then completion in the fall. And if it's no, the donation is no longer available. And so we have been made aware from the donor that April 1st is the final date, that that funding will be available to the Eau Claire School District, and we wanted the board to be aware of that. And that's why we put that April 1st timeline on there, because that's when a decision has to be made. Have any more questions for us?
Board member questions. Commissioner Hambukwale?
Yeah, I just had a question. Who's going to do the fundraising? There was quite a bit of fundraising talked about. Who would do that?
That's a great question. We would have to work on that, and we haven't done a lot of discussion about it. But, you know, we looked at, when we did the Dectronics scoreboards, that's probably the most recent one. It was kind of a joint effort between business and athletics, and so I would anticipate it would be somewhat of a joint effort again as well.
It was pretty much headed by our, was it our athletic directors? So are they willing to do this too?
I don't know, we would have to ask them and see.
Other board member questions at this, Commissioner, are you brought to press your button? Commissioner Beke?
What kind of collaboration has happened so far with the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation? Because to me, this seems like the initiative that this group would work with the foundation seems perfectly suited for collaboration, and the foundation would agree to be able to take responsibility for that funding, ensuring that funding.
There has been some discussion with the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation, and I believe that the donor has wished to work directly with the district.
Okay, so I don't know what kind of communication has been like, but the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation is the district. And so I think this is really a tremendous opportunity, so to establish, like, the working relationship. So to establish like the working relationship that donors understand the foundation is the district and we are the foundation. So I'm just confused about something that could seem, we could really put the foundation to work, possibly in this case, and then in future, with future donors.
Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Commissioner Beekah, I'm not sure that's 100% correct, that the foundation is the district and the district is the foundation. I think they're actually very separate entities in some ways and legally separate entities. And I know, I get what you're getting at, that that support should be there and that should be built in. But I want to be careful that they are not the same.
Of course.
So.
Would you mind just going back to the slide that shows the comparison between both facilities? That one? No, 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 the one with the line items. I think that's an interesting, I will say, just as one board member, this process has been educating, has been educational for me to learn about the state of the, of both of the facilities and to see the comparison in this way. It's very interesting. And it's definitely, it's something that the board should consider, I think, as we just discussed this proposal. One of the questions that I have is regarding the five-year capital improvement plan and the other aspects of the proposal currently that are incorporated in years down the road in the capital improvement plan or that have perhaps been brought up as this should be put in the plan but maybe haven't been put in yet? I'm just wondering if someone has that, potentially that history that maybe we don't have as current board members now? Because certainly you can, and now all the snow is melting, so I might have to take a drive over there and check everything out. But I think you can certainly infer deferred maintenance is an ongoing theme. And so just wondering if there is some history as far as proposals that were, whether it's, you know, looking at the training hallway or training areas or not have dugouts at one versus another or the fields aspect, that disparity. Were some of those things, were they put in the five-year plan? Or were they proposed at some point in the history of our district, recent history? And maybe it wasn't included? I'm just wondering if we know that.
I can tell you that there is no, nothing related to outdoor facilities on the current list for the five-year capital. I know that there has been some discussion about resurfacing the track and the timing of that. But we did talk with Leary last week and that should be coming onto the radar in about 24, 2024, 2026, based upon kind of past historical timing of when the track was resurfaced and when it would need to be done again. So I know that there's been some conversations, but I can say that there isn't anything currently on the list related to resurfacing the track or any of the things that are listed there.
As far as the track is concerned, so they're thinking that, you said that they're thinking that it can withstand for about the next five years? Is that what they said? It's.
That's our internal interpretation.
That's from VNG, okay.
Yes, it is.
Any board members have questions as we discuss this? Commissioner Harder.
So the aspects of the outdoor facility that are going to be addressed with this donation were not identified as a priority previously. Just want to reemphasize that.
Yes, one of the dynamics of the five-year plan is that things sometimes make the list without a dollar amount. Like we know they're coming up on our radar, but they're not, they're not solid. We're not committed to doing them yet. To be honest with you, the things that we're committed to are the ones that the board votes on. And the rest of the items that could be on the five-year plan really are up for discussion about this time every year with administrators and building service managers. So that is a list that's in constant flux. And we may think something is a priority and then something else may happen that creates a different priority for us. So we have a long-running list of things and a shorter list of commitments.
Commissioner Humbleboil.
So our 1.6 million that we always use every year for a capital plan, if we take 1.2 million of that, what would that look like for the rest of the, if it was reallocated and reprioritized?
Some of the, so I don't necessarily have the lists.
Well, but maybe that's what we can get, you know, is what would we not do?
Yes, Molly.
I just had a question, just to clarify these, the rubber rides, training hallway and the hockey training area and the team dugouts that were donated to North. Did we have an estimate of how much total, like the cost of all of that was donated at?
No.
For comparison?
I'll answer so people can hear us. No, we don't know what the estimate on that was.
That might be helpful, though, you know, that might be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Harder.
Yeah, it's true. There is an implication on this slide that, you know, if you look at this slide alone, that North has quite an advantage and has maybe been favored in some way in terms of amenities for the athletic space. Is that sort of a, is that the conclusion that we should draw from this? Or is that, I'm trying to interpret this slide.
Yeah, just data. If you look here at the aerial view, I think some of the setting of North High School lends itself to some of the amenities that you see. So as an example, the larger green space. Memorial is really landlocked as far as street developments and that sort of thing, where North has the opportunity to be a little bit more spread out. So I don't know if it's intentional to say that one has, you know, or intentionally designed to have more than the other. I think the setting of the school makes it easier for one to have some features and makes it harder for the other not to have some features.
I certainly agree with that. I mean, Memorial's right in the middle of, yeah. I'm wondering as far as the, well, actually, I just, I kind of want to make a point, I guess. As we discuss this topic, it's in the context of a lot of other community projects going on regarding athletic facilities. All of them, the ones that I've been reading about are in districts that have one high school, that have one athletic complex. And that's what makes a topic like this especially emotional. Because we do not just have, you know, like in Duran's case, there's a great project going on over there, Altoona, front page today. They have one high school that they can funnel their resources and all of their energy to. And when you have two schools that obviously both have ongoing important needs, that colors this entire process. But I think that's important for people to keep in mind, is that we do have, we have both high schools. And that's why I think this is an emotional topic for some. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at this in a serious light, in my opinion. Because this is a 1.2 million dollar offer basically on the table. And we have the opportunity to turn it down or to accept it with conditions. And we have to make that decision with all the information afforded to us. So, I mean, it's important that we consider it and consider that the, obviously, when you're talking about these buildings, they were built in different times. They are built in different areas of our city that allow for different things. So there never is going to be sameness with these facilities, ever. Never, ever, ever, mark my words. These will never be the same facilities. But approaching this, how can we make sure that there is, that there is a standard across the board with these facilities? You know, I know for a fact that Memorial is one of the only high schools that does not have outdoor restrooms in the whole Big Rivers Conference. So whether, what we want to do with that information is up to us. Obviously, this isn't just restrooms. This is a lot of other things too. But this is certainly an important decision the board will have to make and an important discussion to have. So there are other, yes, Commissioner Torres.
I think that, just thinking about the dual admission program, it took about three years to put it together and arrive to this point. I think that when it comes to athletics and athletics facilities, we need to have a comprehensive plan that aligns with the school district priorities and then work on it. In the same way that we need a comprehensive plan, a vision for early childhood education, in the same way that we need a comprehensive plan to incorporate new technologies in our forms of delivery of the curriculum. In the same way, we need a comprehensive plan to envision and design the ways in which we're going to be addressing the areas for development and weaknesses in terms of academic achievement and growth. And that takes careful planning. I think that we should not rush and that we need to do it well from the beginning. I would, again, invite our good friends in the community that are offering this donation to go ahead and make the donation without these parentory deadlines so that we can work on that comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Beekah.
All right, so I will follow up that point. And again, Commissioner Klinkhammer is absolutely correct in that the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation is not the district and vice versa, as stated. One of my board responsibilities is to serve as a member of that board. And so I think of this situation in that way. This is a new situation for us. What if the experience that we were having is that the Public Schools Foundation was given the responsibility of that 1.2 million? Not the district, but in service to the district. It's the foundation's responsibility and then in collaboration with the donors. What would the conversation be like in that situation? And that's why I want to think about it. It's as we've not had an opportunity like this before. It's new territory. The foundation is very young, very new. But what might be possible if ultimately they took on that responsibility, not the district?
Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Commissioner Beekah, do you mean that they take on the responsibility for the fundraising on behalf of the district? Or that they somehow gain responsibility of the donation? I think what you mean is they take on the responsibility of our part, our 1.2 match and the fundraising. Yeah.
Are you saying Commissioner Beekah to ask of the Public Schools Foundation to own the commitment, the 1.2 commitment as opposed to the district within their organization?
Yes, I'm saying, you know, what might be possible if we thought that if, you know, who knows how many years down the road, when we all had a lot more experience with this and the foundation had much more time to develop? What would the conversation be like? It's a thought question.
Okay. Commissioner Klinkhammer.
I think that's a very interesting idea. Or at least, you know, you, they've raised the issue in the presentation of the district fundraising for this. And certainly that foundation is well-placed to do that type of thing. It's an interesting idea and maybe something we need to think about. Yeah.
So, and I think that's an important point. And I think that really as far as the timeline is concerned, we have to make a decision on April 1st, given what we know from the donors. So I think between now and then, it's really important that board members receive information or student reps receive information that they've asked for. But then also that we perhaps, you know, I can help kind of work with Dr. Hartwick and designate some board members who'd be willing to meet on our behalf with different entities. Perhaps a meeting with the Public Schools Foundation, perhaps a follow-up meeting with the donors. But just to keep that process going and try to involve various board members in that between now and April 1st, just so that by the time, I think what you're saying is important, you know, by the time we make this decision, we're making it, you know, obviously it's a quick turnaround, but we're making this decision having done, having done a pretty good job of reaching out and looking at what are the various options here. Because two weeks is, I mean, it is April 1st. We have a while, so we have some time. If you clear your schedule. Board members, other board members have questions or comments? Yeah, Ms. Green?
Just one thing that I maybe, it's just a question, I guess, would be a possibility is, obviously, there's no denying that athletic facilities and any facility needs to be updated and redone every once in a while. Has there been any talk about possibly, which is more feasible with our district and with money, that we just did the resurfacing of the track, something that obviously is a safety issue? And if we put in the bathrooms at Memorial with this generous donation, instead of making it a full-blown stadium that would replace Carson Park? Because obviously I understand that tracks need to be redone and North had track redone. I don't know what year exactly, but that's a very reasonable request. And obviously bathrooms outside are as well. I just am concerned with turning the entire thing into a stadium when I think there's a much more cost-efficient and equitable answer instead. So that's just something that I would think that maybe is a good idea to look at.
Okay. Are there other board members who have comments or questions at this time? So I'll be following up with some board members after this meeting about some meetings to set up. And board members, if you have questions, who do we want them to be the point person?
Send them to me, please.
All right, lucky you. Okay. So anything else on this from board members? Okay, anyone in the audience have, I believe, is it questions or comments from the public after this item? I think it's just questions that we have in our policy. So if a member of the audience has a question relating to this proposal or the board's deliberation, you can come up and ask it. And we'll have it in the record. Okay. So, thank you very much. And that then takes us to our final agenda item for the night, which is Revenue Committee Proposal Number Two, which is the ECSD Facility Use Fee Schedule. Thank you all for coming.
All right. So last time I was here with proposal number one. Tonight, I'm here with proposal number two. We might get into a routine for a while of bringing these proposals forward, so stay tuned. Just a reminder that we wanted to remind the board and the community who the Revenue Committee members are. And so you can see Commissioner Logan and Bill and Commissioner Harder, Ms. Minor, who is a principal at Lakeshore, Tiffany Tibbetts, Paul Ganrood, Angela Ekman, and Nikki Kirth. And the committee charges to explore potential innovative revenue streams for the district. When we first looked at this with the Revenue Committee, there were a couple of key dates that I wanted to share with the board. On February 18th, the draft fee schedule was discussed with the Policy and Governance Committee of the board. And policy and governance questions were what conversations have been had with before and after-school childcare providers? And did budget development review the fee schedule? My answer to that was that because we were waiting for some information from the board, we have not had any conversations with the recommendation regarding the before and after-school childcare providers. And budget development hadn't seen the fee schedule yet because they wanted it to go to policy and governance first, based upon. yet because they wanted it to go to policy and governance first, based upon some proposals in the fee structure. So, on February 27th, we did take that draft fee schedule over to budget development, and budget development asked us, "How does the district auditorium rental rate compare to UW Eau Claire and the Pablo Center?" And then, "Why would we eliminate the day rate?", and I have a sample to show you in a few minutes, and then approved it to bring it to the full school board for approval. On March 8th, we took the budget development committee's questions back to the Revenue Committee, and, um, we revised the auditorium rate recommendation to be more competitive. Um, the committee gathered some additional information about the auditorium rates, and they also did look at UW Eau Claire and the Pablo Center to see if we were competitive or not with those two specific entities. Um, again, the goal from the Revenue Committee is to create sustainable revenue for the district while staying competitive in our market. And so, the first recommendation from the Revenue Committee was to create a for-profit and not-for-profit rate to stay competitive with other districts and other surrounding facilities. What the committee learned was that most districts for their facility use fees, they have a for-profit rate and a not-for-profit rate. I mean, we found the same thing here locally when we looked at it as well with, um, um, venues that may be considered in competition with the Eau Claire School District. So, the first change that the committee is recommending is to, um, implement a not-for-profit rate and a for-profit rate. Um, currently, you can see in the yellow, that's what's been changed, and this is just for a classroom rate. Um, the rates, the classes are based upon our current class that we have, so Class A is really, um, any PTO or, um, Eau Claire School District activity. And then, um, B and C, um, would be switched to a not-for-profit and a for-profit, and these will be discussed more in detail, lining up with the Facility Equity Committee, um, recommendation as far as those groups and classes. So, we might need to make some tweaks to the wording, um, but I do not believe we'll need to make any adjustments for the rates. Um, and you can see that for a classroom rate, this is very similar to what our current rates are right now, is that the, um, groups that fall under, um, Group B is one rate, and then the groups that fall under C are double the rate, and so that mirrors that same model that we currently have in place for the classroom. If we look at Change Number Two, there's a lot more yellow and a lot more lines on there, um, but it really is talking about the auditoriums. Um, initially, we, um, had talked about, um, eliminating the day rate. Um, our current plan, um, has an hour charge and then a day charge, and basically the day charge is for three hours, even though somebody might use the facility for nine or 10 hours. What we learned when we did the comparison is that most districts just have a flat hourly rate, and they don't cap it at the day rate, or maybe it's a cheaper after you have so many hours. And so, the committee really recommended just having an hourly rate, and so the recommendation, um, for the auditoriums for, um, most of them is either $57 or $112, and that's an hourly rate, and still is very comparable to what we currently have, it's just it's taking off that, um, day rate. We also did ask the Facility Use Office, like, is it normal for people to rent the auditorium for less than three hours and, you know, capture that day rate? Um, and yes, they did that, but even though they might be using it for longer, um, there's not a lot of times where somebody's asking to use the auditorium for an hour or two. And so, um, that was reviewed by the committee, and they also recommended, um, a minimum of four hours when asking for, um, the auditorium rental. At the bottom of this page, um, we also updated the rates for the Memorial Little Theater, and they mirror the rates for the auditorium that are up above. Um, for Change Number Three and Number Four, um, that really is related to the gymnasiums. And again, um, just kind of updating and looking at what is that, the not-for-profit rate and the for-profit rate. And so, again, the charge for a gymnasium, um, is going to be based upon the court. Um, I did receive a question tonight about the, um, Northeast Gym, and comparing that to the Memorial, um, Auxiliary Gym, and why are they different? Um, so we'll need to follow up on that question. Um, I think you can see that the rates are $60, um, an hour versus, uh, $70 an hour. So, we just need to confirm that, um, that comparison is correct, and we'll get that updated if we need to. And then Change Number Five really is looking at equipment. Um, one of the things that we've learned as we have rented, um, classrooms and things over the last several years is that there's just some equipment that's just standard in a classroom now. Um, so exam, for example, a data projector and a document camera, we don't need to rent those separately because it's just part of a standard classroom. And so, you can see that's why they're crossed off, um, and so, not any changes, it's just standard equipment, and we wouldn't charge for that. Um, and then gymnastics equipment, um, we have had some requests to, um, utilize our gymnastics equipment, and that one's just really hard to put a dollar value on, and so we just recommended that to be determined by what's needs, and that we would work with, um, the Facility Use Office and Buildings and Grounds, and possibly the Athletic Department to determine what that might look like. Then we got to the childcare partnership, and so one of the things that we learned and the committee talked about was, um, you know, we have 11,000 students and probably about 5,000 elementary students, and we know that currently the Eau Claire School District has partnerships to provide before and after-school childcare. So, one of the things that the committee looked at is, should the Eau Claire School District be in the business of offering before and after-school childcare? Um, we quickly learned that there are a lot of rules and regulations and licensing things that could be challenging for the Eau Claire School District, and so that recommendation kind of got set aside, and then really looked at childcare partnerships, and what do other districts do, because obviously, we're not the only district that, um, has needs for before and after-school childcare. One of what we learned is that, um, we have, we allow before and after-school childcare in all of our elementary buildings except for one, and in that one building, we have their, we have their own program, and so we don't have a need to contract it out. Um, we have never charged groups for the use of our space for this purpose, and we currently don't have any contracts about who's providing the service. And we also don't charge the application fees. I think this is a nuance when we look at it, I think this is the only area that I'm aware of, that we don't charge an application fee or have a contract, um, with that providing entity. And so, the Revenue Committee, um, looked at that, and they looked out to other districts to see what they were doing with their similar groups. And what we learned was that, um, most districts have a fee that they are charging, um, to the before and after-school childcare programs. Madison's, we looked at extensively because they partner with the YMCA, which is obviously an entity that we partner with as well, and their, um, program and their proposal is pretty complicated. Um, they have a day rate, but it's based upon the number of students that are in attendance, and they project what they think it's going to happen, and then at the end of the year, they actually request the books, and they audit the books, and they adjust their invoices at the end. Um, when we talked about that as a committee, the committee was like, "Wow, that's a lot of work, and that could be a lot of, um, time and energy spent, um, to not gain a lot of revenue." So, our committee looked at the fact that, what if they just implemented a $10 per day per site fee? And what would that look like to, for the district for revenue? Uh, we estimated it would bring in about $20,000 of revenue, and that would be fund-10 revenue, which would offset our operating costs, because we wouldn't necessarily be able to separately identify, here's how much electricity is used by that program, here's how much custodial time is used in that area. Um, and so, that was their recommendation. The other thing that they wanted me to share with you is that, uh, both of the entities that currently provide the childcare, their fiscal year runs differently than the Eau Claire School District. And so, when the board will be asked to, um, vote on these fees and rates, we would put them into effect for July 1st of 2019. The committee felt strongly that there needed to be a delayed entry, um, if the board was going to implement this before and after-school childcare rate, um, or childcare, you know, fee, because those rates for the 1920 school year are already set. And so, they had two options for the, um, board to consider. Um, this likely would come back for a board vote on April 1st with a July 1st, 2019 implementation. And you can see, we have January 1st, 2020 with a question mark, because the board could choose to implement that childcare, um, recommendation as of that date, that's the new, beginning of the entity's new fiscal year, or you could wait another seven months and start at the beginning of our fiscal year and implement it with Ju- July 1st of 2020, and that's why there's question marks, um, on both of those dates, because that's something that the board would need to decide. So, any questions or comments that I can address for you?
I don't see any lights so far, um, but thank you, Ms. Johnson, for presenting, and I, I think that when you look at all this, it makes a lot of sense, especially the nonprofit versus for-profit delineation, um, and the, uh, the childcare piece is really important to discuss as well. I think we could talk about whether or not maybe $10 is too little to be charging per day to some of these organizations, maybe it's 25, $30, or I'm not sure. Um, that could be something that we discuss, but I think it speaks to a broader, uh, issue that we've talked about with the Revenue Committee, at least when it was formed, is that, uh, it's important that we, as a district, really take a look at all of our agreements that we have in the community and renegotiate these arrangements, renegotiate these contracts and/or create a new contract, because some of these things were spoken-word agreements that the district is losing money on, and there's no contract. So, we need to have a contractual relationship with these kinds of organizations and, and try to, uh, you know, I, as, as much as we can, renegotiate things and look at, so it's not so lopsided, as some, as some of our partnerships are, pretty lopsided as far as the financial aspect, so. I definitely, uh, think it's, uh, important that we bring all of these back, and my only, I guess, wonderment is, would it make sense to raise the, raise the day fee for the childcare per site to a bit higher? I'm not sure if, if that's something that's worth, worth, uh, exploring or talking to them about.
I know that when we started the conversation and when we were looking at Madison's model specifically, they had a range, um, I think their highest maybe was 25 or $30 a day, and I think the committee's, um, recommendations that was kind of thinking the fact that these relationships have been in place for a really long time, and there hasn't been anything formal, so as a starting point, um, and then, you know, look at, um, going from there, but, um, just knowing that this was an additional source of revenue that we're missing out. I didn't comment about the application fees, and I think we looked at that could be an additional, maybe about $1,500 a year if we were charging application fees based upon what our current structure looks like. So, I think, um, the committee felt comfortable with the $10, doesn't mean it's the perfect solution, but they thought it was a favorable place to start, knowing that this was something new for our community partners.
Do board members have questions or comments on any of these items, or would Beebe okay with putting them up for, uh, consent agenda at the next meeting? Would that be okay with folks? All right, so we will look to do that, and thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, are there, that brings us to our final item, which is requests for future agenda items. Are there any requests from board members? Okay, I don't see any requests, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thanks.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.